Linda, are we ready? You ready? Okay, here we go. We'll call the regular meeting of the Capitola City Council to order. May I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Harland.
Here.
Councilmember Betrand.
Here.
Councilmember Peterson.
Here.
Councilmember Bator.
Here.
Mayor Termani.
Here. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Tonight's meeting is cable cast live on Charter Communications Cable TV, Channel 8, and AT&amp;T U-verse Channel 99, and is being recorded to be rebroadcast on the following Wednesday at 8:00 a.m. and on Saturday, following the first rebroadcast at 1:00 p.m. on Charter Channel 71 and Comcast Channel 25. Meetings can also be viewed from the city's website, www.cityofcapitola.org. Our technician tonight is Lynn Dutton. As a reminder, please silence your cellphones, and before you come to speak to us at the podium, make sure you sign in before you come up to the podium. The first order of business is we have certificates for retiring advisory committee members. Is Nathan Cross in the room?
I am, sir.
Oh, step forward. How about Margaret? Is Margaret Kinsler here?
She's here.
Okay.
Thank you.
Hey, Nathan.
I've served on many committees with you, and you have served as our at-large member since 2011 on the Arts Commission. You are value-added. You are a citizen that always brings something to the table. I've enjoyed working with you on this and other committees, and I appreciate your service to Capitola.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Nathan. I just want to say it's been a pleasure serving on this particular commission, and the support of the city council and our mayors have been phenomenal, and without that kind of energy behind the projects that we have, we wouldn't have been able to accomplish the kind of things we have, and we look forward to many more projects in the future, and any of you that'd like to get involved with it, you can always volunteer and help out with the Art and Cultural Commission and kind of get your foot in the door and become part of it. And, you know, thanks for all of you for being at the Wednesday night concerts and supporting everything that we've done. It's been a pleasure and been a lot of fun.
Thank you, Nathan. Now, I'd like to ask our past mayor to step forward. We were a little remiss last time because it took us a little longer than we thought to get the gift that we thought you would appreciate, so we, instead of your potted plant that we gave you when you retired, we're giving you a real gift as your time as mayor.
Whoa.
A little stone for your garden. Thank you, Mayor Harland, for helping Capitola bloom 2017.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you, I appreciate it very much.
And you haven't lived till you've worked under Stephanie Harland, trust me.
Haven't seen my garden.
Or been in her garden. Yeah.
The garden's nice.
Okay.
Okay, may we have a report in the closed session, please?
Wait.
Oh.
Soquel Creek.
Oh, I'm awfully sorry. How could I have possibly forgotten? Soquel Creek. Come on up. Bring your bottle of water and tell us about it.
Thank you for having us. We're returning at your request. I think about six months ago, we came and spoke to the council, and you said keep us updated, so we're trying to honor that request. I'm Ron Duncan, the general manager with Soquel Creek Water District, and my colleague, Melanie Mal Schumacher, Special Projects Communication Manager, and I would be remiss if I didn't mention we have our board president, Dr. Bruce Daniels, also a Capitola resident in the audience also here at the back. So with that, we'll just jump right into it. Our basin is in trouble. That supplies groundwater, and the states recognize that. They've classified it as a critically overdrafted basin. As you can see there in the red circle, we're one of the few along the coast, and it makes it even more dire when you're along the coast because not only do you just lower the bathtub and hopefully can fill it back up later if you think of a basin as a bathtub, that doesn't happen in ours. You get what's called seawater intrusion, and it ruins your aquifer forever. That's happened in 70% of the populated coastal regions of the world that rely on groundwater. Odds aren't good. So what's it look like in our district? Our area? Capitola kind of being in the center of that, if you will? That's a map outlined in black is the Soquel Creek Water District area. You're right there in about the center of it. Those red dots and orange are bad. What they indicate are seawater intrusion detected on land in our monitoring wells along the coast. We do that to give us a warning where seawater is. This is a sample taken from one of those wells, and although it looks like regular water, it doesn't taste like regular water. It'd kill grass if you put it on there, it'd make you sick. It's halfway to seawater, and it's taken out of one of those wells. So the question's always been, where is the seawater in the middle of the banana shape? Where is it offshore there? We know it's not onshore because we have wells along the coast there between the red and those, or between those two orange dots, so where is it? That's been the million-dollar question. Well, about, I don't know, a year ago, the ambassador for Denmark visited us and said, "We have a solution that can help you guys." Everybody said no. Big universities, scientific people said it can't be done. We pursued it a little bit further. Our board and the Mid-County Groundwater Agency Board kept asking, "Well, show us a little data. Show us where it's been done." And they said, "Well, it's only been done in one or two places in Europe." And what I mean by "done" is locate the seawater intrusion offshore in the aquifers. So, you know, if it could work, it's a dream come true because it's that missing piece of the puzzle. So credit to our board, to the Mid-County Groundwater Agency Board that said, "We'll take a gamble that, and see if this will work in our area." So there is a picture of the helicopter. Who here remembers the helicopter flying around offshore? Yeah, saw the big thing, kind of scary and interesting at the same time? Think of it as basically a giant metal detector when flown over the water can look down through the ocean, down through layers of the earth, and detect whether seawater is in that aquifer way down below, or whether fresh water is down there. And we're hoping for fresh water. So in a scramble, we, because we capitalized on that helicopter flying 600 square miles inland down south of us, not offshore but inland, we were able to mobilize it and get it to come up here on very short notice, and those red lines are the lines that it flew. So a lot of lines, 320 kilometers in total, mostly kind of paralleling the coast, back and forth, and then some lines that go offshore further, and a couple that could go inland. You can't fly over any houses, roads, or anything like that, so we had a limit to where we flew it. So what you're about to see here hasn't been seen before. The report is going to come out in March to the Mid-County Groundwater Agency, so this is a preliminary, just a one-shot out of the draft report, but I wanted to give you a hint of kind of how they display their information. So they have hundreds of pictures like this, and what you're looking at is a, at a certain depth, a horizontal layer down, maybe let's say 100 meters, I'm not exactly sure which one this is, it's just an example, and it can, and so what it does is it color codes red and green to be certain things, so in this case, red would be seawater, maybe it's down in the aquifer 100 feet, whatever this is, and then green would be on the border brackish water, blue would be freshwater. This is just an example because we have to wait for the report to come out. We got some final peer review going on. It's actually been completed, we're just tidying up the report itself, but I'll summarize it in saying, the best way to describe it is, time is ticking, and we're definitely on the right approach trying to secure supplemental water supplies. And there'll be more details when it comes out, and I'll wait for that to happen. I don't want to serve the Mid-County Groundwater Agency. So in a nutshell, you could say Houston, we have a problem, or maybe in this case, Capitola, we have a problem. Matter of fact, I couldn't help but noticing in your agenda on page 247, the addendum to the general plan, the EIR, it even states that, under the hydrology section, that implementation, "The plan could result in significant unavoidable impacts to the groundwater supply." What I'd like to propose to you tonight is that we have a potential solution, and that's our community water plan. They're not unavoidable, they are avoidable, and we seek community input on trying to reach to implement those projects to make it, you know, avoidable. So with that, my colleague, Melanie's going to come up and talk to you about potential solutions that we have and where we're at on that.
Thank you. We have just a few slides on the community water plan and some specific slides on the pure water Soquel project, but the community water plan was created by our community for our community. It was a very public process, and this report right here has been put out twice. This is the update. In 2015, we had a larger document. This is the update to some of the progress that we've made, but really, the primary goals of the community water plan is to protect against seawater intrusion so that it doesn't move further inland. It's to provide water for both current and future generations, and of course, we want to ensure that there is water reliability and sustainability, and also ensure protection of the environment. The community plan is comprised of a multifaceted approach, which includes water conservation, groundwater management, and new water supplies. We're really not going to touch on a lot of these. You guys already know that many of the community members here are great water savers, and we've been working collaboratively with other agencies to manage the groundwater basin to make sure that we meet the state mandate. So tonight, we just really want to kind of focus on what are we doing to create those solutions? So the district right now has four water supply options that we're moving forward in different stages of evaluation. We've got the river water transfer, which is a water exchange with the city of Santa Cruz. We're looking and monitoring the actions in Moss Landing with a deep-water decal project. We're also doing some investigative work on what kind of stormwater capture projects could be done in our basin, and we're focusing quite a bit on doing recycled water and purifying that water for groundwater replenishment. As I mentioned, all of these are kind of going through different phases of evaluation, so we are carrying them forward. No decision yet has been made. Right now, we're thinking that there could be one or a couple of those that could address the water shortage. If I could just take a moment to say, you know, how many people here have heard of pure water Soquel? Okay. So the Pure Water Soquel Project is Soquel Creek Water District's, you know, district-led project, which it would take and put to beneficial reuse, treated wastewater that goes out from the Santa Cruz wastewater treatment plant, about 25% would be taken by the district, purified through a multi-stage process, and then put to beneficial reuse by putting that water back into the ground, and that would encourage the groundwater basin to be replenished and restored to protective water levels, and also protect against seawater intrusion. It really met three main criterias that the community wanted in a water supply, which was high water quality, water reliability, and timeliness. As you know, Soquel Creek Water District has been evaluating, pursuing supplemental water supply for some time, and it's the sentiment of the community, our board and staff, that we really are trying to move forward in securing a supplemental water supply so that we can restore the basin. Now, with the water supply options, there were two main things that have come up in the last year that we wanted to focus our update to the Capitola Council to on, and that is, you know, the questions that we get from the community, is the water safe? It was also a question that our board really wanted us to evaluate, and so last year, we commissioned an independent advisory panel comprised of six technical experts. They met here in September in this council room, and just wanted to quickly say they were academics, Dr. Chana Rock from the University of Arizona, Dr. Karen Nelson from Cal Berkeley, Dr. Lynn Haber from the University of Cincinnati. Those three academics were joined by Dr. Gordon Thrupp, Dr. Joe Catrivo, and Jason Dedakis, and these six represent technical experts in the field of drinking water standards, toxicology, microbiology, hydrology, and risk assessment. So they kind of really delved into the work that Soquel Creek Water District and the consultants have been doing, and they answered a lot of questions from the public, and the coverage that we got from that meeting and our report was the headlines on the Santa Cruz Sentinel that said, "The National Expert Panel Gives Soquel Creek Recycled Water Plan a Thumbs Up." So, you know, from an outsider's perspective, as we're going forward, we have this panel that is creating that oversight as we continue to evaluate. In addition, always with a project, it's about money, and so some key milestones that we've hit in the last couple of years is that we've gotten some grants that we're really proud of. We had a $75,000 grant from the State Water Resources Control Board, and $150,000 grant from the U.S. Bureau of Reclamation, so both state and federal money is coming to this project. And then just last week, we got a letter from the State Water Resources Control Board for a $2 million grant. So that was, we feel it's a really proud moment for the district that the state is investing that kind of money into our community, into our agency, to ensure that we can provide water to our community. Just in terms of cost and timing, the Pure Water Soquel Project is, at this point, cost estimate is about $60 to $70 million. You know, no water supply project is inexpensive, but we feel that this is a project cost that could be complemented by additional outside funding. As I have here on this slide, we are going to be looking at other funding, and potentially there is a grant with this $2 million grant that we got, which is for planning money, there is a pot of money for up to $50 million, and this comes from a larger pot, which is $800 million for the state specifically for groundwater protection of contamination or prevention and cleanup. And because this is a seawater intrusion problem, the state really wants to ensure that we are protecting this water supply, and again, because this is 100% groundwater-dependent for our community, we don't have any other sources. So in terms of timeline, you know, we're right now steady, 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 and we are anxious to release a draft environmental impact report by June that would then, you know, include a very public comment period, so we're encouraging people to learn more about our project and participate in the process, assuming that the project continues to move forward. The other timelines for the project include permitting and design, and then going out for construction and implementation, with the big milestones being if the project does get built and come online, then by 2022, we should be able to replenish the groundwater basin with this purified water and hit sustainability by the 2040 state mandate. And I'm going to have Ron wrap up.
So I'll just close it out, but before I say the final words, we work with a lot of agencies, and I just want to recognize your staff, they're tremendous to work with from the top. They're tremendous to work with, from the top all the way down. They get back to us. They try to collaborate. You really do have an outstanding staff. And I thank the board for that, and/or the council, and Jamie. So we really appreciate that. In closing, our goal is sustainability. That's what it is. Quite simple, sustainability of the groundwater basin. And your interest in that, we appreciate, because we feel that helps you also reach your goals. And so in a sense, we have a lot of commonality there. And thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you. Counsel, you have any questions? Thank you. Oh, yes, Peter.
Yeah, I'm just curious if we were to find out tomorrow that our groundwater was contaminated, is there an emergency backup plan, pipe, beam, truck, something, how we get water?
We do have emergency contingency plans, everything from, you know, cutting back use, mandatory restrictions. We do have two interties, one with the city of Santa Cruz and one with Central Water District. Whether they can supply water at those times is, you know, to be seen when we request it. So that's what we have right now.
Are they also dependent on groundwater supplies?
Central Water District is 100% dependent on groundwater. They're in the same boat we are. They're part of the Mid-County Groundwater Agency that, you know, the state has identified...
Santa Cruz as well?
Santa Cruz is an odd burden in the county. They rely almost completely on surface water, 96% surface water. They do tap into the aquifers a little bit. So they've got a little bit different story. When it rains, they have water. When it's dry or drought, they're even hurting a little bit worse than we are.
Thank you.
Thank you. Jacques, do you have a question?
Yeah, I just want to commend the water district for being very consistent on this message. I think that you are a water district that we can all be proud of. You've consistently worked on this. You're providing solutions. I know it's going to be a hard one to convince the public on. I appreciate your efforts to do so and your transparency in doing that. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
We'll move on to report on closed session.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Tremini, members of the city council. There were three items on this evening's closed session. It began at 6 o'clock this evening. The first was a conference with labor negotiator involving all bargaining groups. The council received a report from its negotiator and gave direction. There was no reportable action on those items. The second were two liability claims, the claim of Jonathan Gettleman, attorney for a John Doe minor, also a claim of Leslie Eurus, E-U-R-S, against the city. Council received a report, but there was no reportable action. Those items are also listed as eight, C, and D on your consent agenda.
Thank you. City clerk, is there any further additional material other than what's been delivered to the council already?
There was an email that was received this morning. There are copies on your desk. So it's a total of three public comments for item 9A, and then also for item 8A, the revised minutes that went out previously.
Very good. Thank you. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda, staff?
Staff, there's no changes.
Now comes the time for public comments. Anyone who would like to address the council on items not on tonight's agenda, please come forward and do so.
Thank you. Good evening. My name's Becky Steinbruner. I actually want to comment on the presentation from SoCal Creek Water District. Will that be allowed?
Please, go right ahead.
Thank you very much. My name is Becky Steinbruner. I'm a resident of Aptos and a customer of a small privately-owned water company, Pure Source Water, within the same aquifer as we all drink from, the Parisma aquifer. I'm here to really speak up on behalf of a group called Water for Santa Cruz, and I urge you all to look at their website, waterforsantacruz.com. The leader of that group, Mr. Scott McGilvery, is leading an effort to make public that there is another solution other than the, to the water problem than SoCal Creek's preferred project. And it is stated as their preferred project, the Pure Source Water project, which will cost, as you saw, between $60 and $70 million, and not be able to give us any relief until possibly starting after its construction in 2022. The project, the solution, is a regional one that SoCal Water for Santa Cruz proposes, and that is an intertie connection that already exists between the city of Santa Cruz and SoCal Creek Water District. In the winter, stormwater from the north coast streams, which are pre-1914 water rights restricted, could be brought down and used for SoCal Creek Water District's customers and let their wells rest. This has been shown to be highly effective in restoring groundwater levels, especially in the winter. There could also be some rainy collectors that could collect water from along the San Lorenzo River, and possibly some supply from the Loch Lomond reservoir with the agreements of Santa Cruz City that could again be used through the intertie and allow the wells to rest in the mid-county basin area. What SoCal Creek Water District, I'm sorry to say, didn't tell you is that they are doing their due diligence to investigate this with a pipe loop study that's currently going on at the University of Virginia, and the results of that study will be out in June, testing to make sure that using water from different sources, surface and groundwater, will not adversely affect infrastructure or the health of the customers. The preliminary results, as the engineer Taj Dufour has reported, look very promising and are much more compatible than had been thought. The water transfers could begin next winter, and we could have immediate relief for our overdrafted aquifer at a fraction of the cost. SoCal Creek Water District's number is $600,000. And it's there, and it's possible for a fraction of the cost. The district just had to raise their rate 17.5%, in part to support the preliminary work for their preferred project. I want to let you know that the National Water Resource Institute...
You need to wrap up soon?
Did say that they would suggest the district first try a small pilot project rather than jumping in whole bore. So please investigate the waterforsantacruz.com site and support other alternative methods. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to address the council on items that are not on tonight's agenda? And I see the board president, Bruce Daniels, coming up. I'm sure something came up in that last public comment that he'd like to comment on.
Yeah, just to clarify a few things. By the way, thanks for hearing me. This proposal, or these proposals, have been presented to us numerous times and to the city of Santa Cruz. There's a big flaw in the whole thing, that they're saying we should go and take water from Santa Cruz, and that's kind of like saying you should go and take water from Sacramento, I mean, money from Sacramento or money from Washington, D.C. Unless they give it to you, you can't take it. And that's the same thing with this. For example, they mentioned Loch Lomond. Well, there is water rights issues that when the city got that water to put into Loch Lomond from the state, the state required that they only use it in certain places at certain times. And we have no water rights to that at all. So even if the city wanted to give us that water, they couldn't do it because of the state regulations that they're under. And that's true of most of these things. And we are currently working, as we've mentioned, on a plan to get this north coast water, as it's called, which is, was something that the city got many, many years ago, and so therefore is not regulated like some of the other water. And it's possible the city might want to give us more than the 300 acre feet they're talking about. And that's only like 20% of what we need to fix our basin. So it's help, and we intend to get it. We're spending hundreds of thousands of dollars studying this problem to make sure that we don't end up with lead in our pipes and water that would be poisonous. So we're studying it because we'd like to do that transfer, but it doesn't solve our problem, and we need something to completely solve our problem. It might help, and we're spending money to try and see if we can use it. But all the other solutions are dependent on, you know, getting the city, first of all, to agree that that's what they want to do, and second of all, getting the state to allow that to even happen. So it's often presented as this panacea that'll just come along and fix our problems at almost no cost. And unfortunately, it's just not true right now.
Thank you, Bruce.
It might eventually happen.
Appreciate it. Anyone else like to come up and address the council? Come on up. And I'm not going to have someone rebut Bruce, because we're not going to turn this into a debate on water issues. So be gentle with your comments.
Nothing to do with water.
Oh, no, that's okay.
My name is George Atneal, and I'd like to begin by thanking you all for all you do for us in Capitola. It's been my pleasure to interface with each of you individually, as well as in this forum, and it's a pleasure to... gush. So on that note, I am here to report about a class that was offered to the residency where I live, which is at 750 Bay Avenue. I'm part of the senior apartments there. And we had a lovely CHP officer come, Officer Drake, to enlighten us as to how we could survive our aging, driving skills and challenges. Among the residents' comments during this class were several that had to do with the crossing at Bay Avenue and Hill Street. That crossing can have, at particular times of the day, seven vehicles waiting to go. Therefore, with the four, with the square that allows for folks to cross, that scenario can get very scary. As a matter of fact, comments were that individuals preferred to drive rather than walk across the avenue, basically, across the avenue, because they didn't want to get killed, and I'm quoting. So I'm here because at the April 2016 Vision Meeting on Jade Street, we were asked to submit our vision for Capitola, and I requested a light or some kind of a system, especially at that particular intersection. And that request made it to the top five priorities. So I'm kind of wondering where we are, because not only is it old folks with walkers and canes and stuff, but it's also kids on cell phones. We get, everybody goes down the avenue to New Brighton School, and they're not paying attention. They're busy, and it's dangerous. We also have our share of homeless people who are suffering and not paying attention. So if you could help out here, I'd be grateful.
We all get an answer to that right now. Thank you very much.
Your pardon?
Have a seat. We're going to stick around. We may not even get an answer to your question. Anyone else like to address the council?
Is it, there's the tow pass or the...
It's on the agenda.
...further so we'll not have a chance to talk.
Yes, absolutely. We're just going to torture you a little bit more, just listening to government stuff. Counsel, comments? I'm Ed. Kristen?
So a lot of us are aware that we had a meeting last night at the J Street Center, and Merlin Guyer came and talked to us about their plans for the mall. But really, what they were asking for was input from the community. And they are also going to put out a survey and reach further out to the community, and then get back to us with a report on what they found. So my basic comments are, I appreciate that the new mall owners, just to be certain, they only own a certain portion of the mall, are reaching out to the community. So I think this is a really good opportunity for the people in Capitola and the surrounding area, as pointed out by some of the people who came. It's not just for Capitola, the live folks, SoCal, a lot of people from those communities also come here. So this is our chance to let the new owners of the central part of the mall see what you would prefer, what kind of options you would like to see at a revised mall. So I think it's a good start. Thank you.
Stephanie?
No, thank you.
I have no comments except Steve. Can you tell us what the status is of perhaps a lit crosswalk of some kind across Bay Avenue?
I assume you're talking about the flashing beacons and that type of light?
Some sudden flashy, because there are light.
Right now, that's not a project that is funded or actively being worked on. The possibility of putting in the flashing lights, those are really designated for intersections that do not have any stop controls at them, stop lines or traffic signals. But I would be, I could look into them and see what other options we have. When she was up talking, the first thing that came up was the safest thing to put there would be a traffic signal, which controls traffic.
We know what a traffic signal is. What kind of an order of magnitude is the flashers, even though they're at, we're using them at a non-stop sign?
So they are in the order of magnitude of $50,000 to traffic signals, $250,000 to $300,000.
Right. Okay, maybe you can come back to us, let us know what our other options are. Because everyone knows that's a dangerous intersection to cross.
Okay.
Great. Thank you. Mr. Treasure, do you have comments for us?
At the risk of being a fiscal curmudgeon, I wonder in retrospect if we really needed to hire a consultant in order to make a decision on item 9A. Something to think about.
Thank you. Okay, we'll go to the consent calendar. These are items that are taken as a single item. Would anyone like to pull any items on the consent calendar? Anyone from the public like to pull an item on the consent calendar?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to pull item G. At your pleasure.
We're going to hold that to the end of the meeting. Thank you. Because you know what it's like. We'll go to general government, public hearing.
Do you want to make...
Oh, I'm sorry, is there a motion?
Make a motion to adopt the remainder of the consent calendar?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Passes unanimously. I'm sorry, I just got so excited doing that. I'm sorry, Dennis.
Come back in three hours.
No, no. You know, I think in consideration of how fast it would be, how fast is the offshore drilling item going to be? Because we have come out in favor of this many times. This is just another vote in favor of banning offshore drilling in view of our Department of the Interior action lately. So unless you, if you have five people from Save Our Shores, you're going to wait till the end of the meeting.
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five people?
We need five minutes, we're done.
You can have one person come up to the podium. Give us your story. Who's your spokesperson?
You jumped in.
I know. I looked at the rest of our agenda, and it worried me.
Good evening, Mayor Tremini and council members, and thank you for the special consideration to take this before the end of the meeting. I will be brief because I agree this issue has been heard before, but we are under new circumstances. By the way, I'm Catherine O'Dea, Executive Director of Save Our Shores. And so I think what's new here is that, I think everyone would agree, whichever side of the aisle you sit on, our governance in D.C. is unusual at best and somewhat unpredictable. And so since the president and his administration and the Bureau of Ocean Energy Management has decided that we should eliminate the plan already in existence for the five-year leasing plan that comes up every five years, and has decided to move forward and introduce a new one that puts basically the entire coast of the U.S. on the plan for potential offshore oil and gas drilling, is rather unprecedented, a bit alarming. We recognize that California has several protections in place for our coast, but I think the unpredictability of what happens in D.C. these days warrants continuous demonstration of California and its people's resistance to having our shore put up for sale to the oil and gas industry. So we are very pleased. We thank you for considering the resolution and would urge you to pass the resolution. You would be joining a group of 23 other communities across the state, as well as your neighbors, the entire county of Santa Cruz, city of Santa Cruz, city of Watsonville. Even our neighbors in Scotts Valley are going to agendize this resolution probably at their next meeting. We've also got county of Monterey and the city of Marina to pass resolutions. So again, thank you for your continuous environmental leadership. So again, thank you for your continuous environmental leadership and for hearing our request. Please do pass the resolution. Thank you so much.
Thank yous. Counsel?
Motion to approve Item G.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Thank you. We'll go on to general public hearings, review the results of the Jewell Box Traffic Study. Staff report? Are you the same person who did the PowerPoint for Merlin and Guyer last night?
This isn't working. Jamie, can you pull it out?
You're good.
Could you pass the top of the box down?
Okay. Hopefully this will work. Excuse us. All right. Let's get, good evening, Mayor and Council. Item before you is a review of the Jewell Box Traffic Survey that the city conducted from November through December of 2017. Just to give us a little background on why the survey was put out there, in January of 2017, I think it was one year ago, this council meeting, second meeting in January of 2017, residents along the tow pass street submitted a petition to the City Council requesting the city address the volume of cut-through traffic on the street. The mayor at that time referred them to the Traffic and Parking Commission. The commission reviewed traffic data and options developed by staff, and a report on the options, including the recommendation of the Traffic and Parking Commission, was then brought back to the City Council in July of last year. At that meeting, the direction was given to the council to form a community committee to help us develop a survey of the Jewell Box and the surrounding areas to determine the depth of the traffic issues and gauge the support of options. So just to kind of review why we went to even that step, is looking at the traffic data, the city authorized the collection of traffic data on two different dates, one in February of 2017, one in March of 2017. Looking at the average daily traffic, on tow paths, it fluctuated, you know, one day it was eleven, almost 1,200, and little, next one's a little over 1,300 cars on tow paths, while Opal, which is the one block above, had 214 and 187. And on Jewel Street, which is the next street above, we only got one data point, and it was at 157. So you can see there was a significantly more volume of traffic on tow paths than was on Opal and Jewel. Looking at speeds, the speed on tow paths was 23 and 21, and we're talking about the sphere, talking about the 85th percentile, which is generally considered what the flow of traffic is. There's certainly cars that are faster, and those are the most noticeable, but the 85th percentile is what we use to set speed limits and do enforcement on. Opal was in the same range, slightly over 20 miles an hour as was Jewel. So all the speeds, while under the 20, the posted 25 mile per hour limit, due to the narrowness of the road, the amount of parked cars on the road, certainly 20 to 25 miles an hour can be, can feel very fast on a road like that. So looking at the survey results, actually, how we set up the survey, the survey committee itself met in August and September of last year, and the final survey entailed 17 questions that tried to measure experience and perceptions of driving in and around the Jewell Box, and their opinion on the options that had been prepared by staff and efforts the city should take on the traffic concerns. A total of 255 unique responses were received, representing about 10% of the total addresses that are in the greater Jewell Box area. So this is a map that shows the Greater Jewell Box area. See if my mouse will show up. It won't. So you can see at Capitola Avenue, you can see where the Jewell Box is located, in the middle of that green shape, what we consider the formal Jewell Box. So we extended it above Capitola Road, over into the Prospect Avenue area. We included Trade Winds Mobile Home Park and the area of 42nd and Diamond. So survey, postcards from Maildale, every resident in that area with a link on how to take the survey. The survey is also available to take by paper, both at City Hall and at the community center. So here's kind of just a bar graph, and I realize I can't read this, but it is in the staff report of all the streets that we had respondents from. Another way to look at it is, this represents 176 of the addresses, for some reason, but you can see the majority of them were in the Jewell Box and quite a few in the other outlining So looking at the actual results, I'll take a minute here to pause, just say I'm not showing the results for all 17 questions tonight. I'm kind of hitting the highlights and the important ones. I do have slides or another presentation I can bring up if we want to see every question and every response. But anyway, I'll go with this. One of the questions, one of the first questions we asked was people's perception of what are the problems of driving in the Jewell Box and the surrounding area. So we asked them to rank on their feeling of if this was a problem or not, and we asked for volumes of cars, speed of cars, lack of sidewalks, and traffic noise. And what this paragraph shows is the green and the blue graphs are, it's very significant or a significant problem, average problem, and then the blue and the orange are minor or insignificant problems. So you can see, volume of cars, 54% of the people rated it very significant or significant. Speed of cars, that number is 68%. Lack of sidewalks, 40% of the people considered it a significant or very significant problem. And traffic noise was at 37%. Question seven then asked people if they believed that cut-through traffic or commute traffic, particularly during commute hours, is a problem. As you can see, nearly 70% of the people did think it was a problem. And then the survey talked about differences in the volumes of traffic on various streets. Some were what I'd shown you with tow paths, around 1,300, and the other ones around 150 to 200. Excuse me. And the survey asked if they, the city should take action to try and reduce those. Slightly over 51% said yes, and 42% said no. The next question, though, asked, kind of gave some more details of reducing the traffic on tow paths, you know, involved putting traffic on other streets and impacting other intersections, if their response would change. And you can see the noes went up to about 67% here, while the yes went down. So, well, people recognize it a problem and kind of think they should do it, they really justify, you know, don't, don't bring, don't affect the other roads, which is impossible. So we presented five options that were developed by staff on how to try and resolve, and we only looked at trying to resolve traffic through the Jewell Box area. We didn't look at the Greater Jewell Box area when we developed. These are the five that were presented to the City Council back in July. I'm not going to go through them, but I just wanted to kind of remember which numbers are one. One was, option one was one ways between 45th and 47th. Option two was one ways going the other way on 47th to 49th. Option three was a mixture of one-way streets in the area. Option four was diagonal diverters, which basically created loops within the Jewell Box, and it also protected 47th Avenue. That was the recommendation of the Traffic and Parking Commission. And then option five was a series of dead-end streets, just to prevent through traffic. So the survey asked respondents to rate their support of these five options, and kind of a strong negative support came out. As you can see, the green lines here are strongly opposed to making, supporting those options. The blue is opposing that action. As you go down, five would be support, and the purple would be strongly, or undecided. Anyway, as you can see, 56% of the people were opposed or strongly opposed to option one, 63% were opposed or strongly opposed to option two. You can see the numbers across 51. The Traffic and Parking Commission had a 66% opposition, and option five had a 64% opposition. So we, moving on to question 14, we kind of wanted to measure their interest in other traffic options besides those five that we had presented. So this one asked if they would be willing to consider large-scale, larger community traffic options, such as maybe restricting traffic on Jade Street or restricting traffic on 47th Avenue. And again, 45% of the people were strongly opposed or opposed, and 30% were supportive or unsupportive, or strongly supportive of that. The next question, we changed it and kind of asked them, would they consider minor local traffic calming things, like speed bumps, traffic signs, noise feedback, or speed feedback signs? And here we got a 55% support or strongly supportive, and only 18% opposed or strongly opposed. So there seemed to be support for maybe trying some smaller traffic calming measures rather than large-scale diverting traffic. So included in the survey was an opportunity for people to provide written comments, just to answer the survey questions. Overall, there's over 1,000 written comments. I've read through and scanned them. Can't say I've read every one, but I've scanned them and kind of got a sense of the ones that were trying to address the problems, and I summarized them here. Safety, safety on the streets is probably the biggest concern, I read. Cut-through drivers ignoring traffic laws was the next one. Repeatedly, requests for speed bumps was raised. Several people brought up connecting 49th Avenue to Cliff Drive. A lot of people brought up cert, limiting certain traffic movements, for example, left turn off of Portola onto 47th during commute times. And the other big one was improving traffic flows on the arterials, and I added end highways. That's where we want our commute traffics going, is on our arterials and not through our residential areas. So this is kind of my discussion on, and my views on the whole thing. Traffic calming and reductions are very difficult community issues to resolve, as we're seeing is you remove the traffic one street and you're just putting it onto another, and it becomes very difficult. Traffic calming includes multiple efforts to guide, warn, enforce, and educate all road users, which include drivers, pedestrians, and bicyclists, trying to make them all safe out there. Rerouting traffic is probably the most difficult thing we could do, and my thought is that it's probably done better on a bigger scale than on a street-by-street scale. You need to look at the whole area. Trying to treat one street or even a neighborhood of streets is only pushing it out onto other streets and adjoining whatever area you want to treat. You need to look at it on a large scale. In fact, I'd like just to add that safety improvements that are hopefully going to be implemented on Hill Street in the very near future, where we took parking off, they do a good job of improving the separation of various street users, namely bikes, peds, and cars, and really do make the streets safer, but they don't necessarily resolve traffic speed or volume issues. So I've been asked to kind of summarize our efforts to date on this matter and the time we've spent on it. This is our second City Council hearing we've had on this matter. There was two hearings held before the Traffic and Parking Commission. We had two of the survey committee meetings that we held. Once the survey was released, I hosted a community outreach meeting on the survey to try and answer any questions people may have on the survey. We spent about $10,000 on staff augmentation and consulting cost. I know the city treasurer commented on that. I'd like to emphasize that most of that is just having staff available and public works, as we know, we're short-staffed there. And so most of that is staff augmentation. I did consult with their traffic engineer, which I would put more on the consulting side. Probably about, of that $10,000, I would say 10% is consulting costs, and the rest are augmentation costs. And the traffic counts that we did were about $3,000 each, or $3,000 total. So based on the survey results, I've listed some things the council may want to consider here. First would be directing staff to develop a traffic calming plan of signage and other lower-level devices without changing traffic patterns. I think it would be, we would develop them, hold another, maybe another community meeting, try and present them, see if they're supportive, at least certainly hold another public hearing at a City Council meeting. Direct staff to prepare a citywide speed bump policy. And here I'll pitch that I probably get half a dozen or so requests for speed bumps a year from various residents on various streets throughout the entire city. So if we want to move forward with installing speed bumps at all, I think it's important we have a citywide policy that defines, you know, budgets and percent of people in a neighborhood that need to support it and all sorts of things. I suspect that we'll get lots of requests if we were to adopt a citywide speed bump policy or to start installing them in one neighborhood. Other neighborhoods are going to want them. Another direction could be direct staff to continue on the path we're worrying, where we start preparing different additional traffic pattern adjustments that could be made, and repeat maybe another survey process or another community vetting process, or take other steps that you may be hearing at tonight's public hearing. So that's the end of my presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Questions of staff? Jacques?
Has this report been reviewed by the Traffic and Parking Committee or the group that put together the survey in the neighborhoods that we're talking about?
They have reviewed the results of the survey, yes.
Any comments from them that we could share?
No, actually, we ended up talking about the process more than it was the final results. There definitely was a split on the Traffic and Parking Commission regarding which actions to support, and so we ended, like I said, we talked about the process. We did not, I did not ask them for a recommendation or anything like that when we reviewed the results.
Okay, thanks.
Stephanie, anything? Folks? Okay, we will open up the public portion. I know a lot of you are dying to come up and speak, so this is the time.
My name's Carl Schubert, and I live at 4730 Topaz Street. I came here about a year ago with a number of neighbors to discuss a situation, an unsafe situation that we felt was occurring on Topaz Street, and that was the large amount of cut-through traffic that goes through that neighborhood. I've lived in that home for 10 years, and I have noticed a significant change, and I'm not sure if it's because people are avoiding the freeway, or if they have new, you know, new tools on their smartphones like Waze, but there's significantly more. Steve Jesberg did some quantitative measurements of traffic counts, and that's the data that you've got to come back to. There's 10 times more traffic going down that street than any other of those streets in the neighborhood, and it's an unsafe situation. There's tons of traffic going through there. We've counted them, we know that. The survey that you saw was opened up to a very broad area of the Jewell Box, almost to 41st, over to Claire Street, and what you're seeing is an average. If you look at all those people and you average all the data, you're going to get average data. But if you were to look at the people who are impacted, the people that have hotspots, that data is going to look different. If you survey the Topaz Street people, I guarantee you that data is going to look different. And there are other hotspots, it's not just us. But I think if you look at the community, there are areas that have traffic issues that need to be addressed. And as far as I'm concerned, we've got a safety issue on that street. It's 30-foot wide, there's parking on both sides, two lanes of traffic, no sidewalks. You can't bike down it, you can't walk down the street with a stroller, you can't walk down with your spouse hand in hand without dodging traffic. So what I ask you to do is to give direction to the traffic committee and to Steve's department to do something about it, and it's not just speed bumps, it's more of some type of a diversion. We somehow have to get this traffic off of these narrow streets, back to the collector streets and the arterials that were designed to carry that amount of traffic. It's unsafe, and something's going to happen. Somebody's going to get hurt, somebody's going to get killed, and we're going to come back here, and you guys are going to be in a terrible situation, feel bad about it, as we all are. So I'm asking you to do something. Don't just take the average data and say, all we have to do is another survey and everything is going to be okay. There's hotspots. You've got to have these people address the hotspots. So, anyway, thank you. Thank you for listening to us, Mayor, council members, and I know you hear this constantly, and... And I know you hear this constantly and hopefully you'll address it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next.
I'm on Topaz Street, couple houses down from Carl. My wife couldn't be here tonight and she wrote something and asked me to read it for you tonight. Dear Honorable Council, City Council, I wanted to impart my continued concerns with the traffic situation in the jewel box and the attendant traffic survey recently conducted as I am unable to attend this evening's meeting. Traffic safety through the jewel box is sketchy at best and worst on Topaz Street. During the morning and evening commute hours, this council has shown through their commissioned traffic monitoring surveys that the volume on Topaz Street is close to 10 times the traffic flow on other residential streets in the jewel box and speed is definitely a problem. I was encouraged to see that many response to jewel box traffic survey are concerned as well with safety and volume of commute traffic through our little street and neighborhood. Safety is a top priority on residential streets and I fear that this matter is a matter of time before we are discussing further property destruction, bodily injury, and maybe even death due to speeds and traffic volumes. In the survey comments, I read that one of our residents described being hit by a car traveling down their street and having to be airlifted to a hospital. As I have mentioned at a previous council meeting, I have witnessed vehicle damage to parked cars on the street, including rear-end accidents and side mirrors ripped off by a speeding truck. Bottom line is that our streets are not wide enough to accommodate this volume of traffic going both ways. I would like to point out that city council has in the past taken action to change traffic flow on one street, Crystal, by installing a one-way traffic signs to curtail traffic. It seems that precedent has been set in this regard. I am hopeful that the council will determine that with the help of the jewel box traffic survey and other recently commissioned studies that something must be done to address this very real and dangerous problem. I am encouraged that the original complaints of the Topaz Street residents have been validated by the results of the commission studies the council has undertaken. Thank you in advance for your attention to this matter. I would look forward to the council's comments and recommendations to Steve Jesperg regarding the traffic survey. And if I may, I wrote a little something too.
You've only got about 30 seconds. Go ahead.
Oh, okay. City Council, thank you for taking the time to focus your attention on the traffic flow in the jewel box and surrounding neighborhood. As a full-time resident on the busiest street in the jewel box, I see on a daily basis that many people use our neighborhood as a cut-through commute for their trips to and from one side of town to another. I know from the car count commissioned by the city that our street gets about 10 times the traffic as the other jewel box streets. And since this has been quantified with real data, it's true. The data shows that it's one street that gets this abnormal volume of traffic, which also shows that this is a very localized problem specific to one route through the jewel box. It is a perplexing problem that may be, as time goes by, may get worse.
Time to wrap up.
With no easy solution as to how to fix it, but we as a community should try to come up with a solution to protect other neighborhoods from becoming the next commute shortcut. People will do almost anything to shave a few minutes off their commute unless the city decides they want to put a stop to it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next. Welcome.
Hi, thank you. My name's Dana Ingersoll. I live on the corner of 47th and Topaz. I've spoken before. I have a now three-year-old and I want you all to know that there are a lot of toddlers in the jewel box. I hang out with them at Jade Street Park. Hopefully they'll stay around. Some are renters, but some are definitely homeowners. And as you may know, toddlers love to run into streets, okay? So I'm talking like every time I'm bringing my son in and out from the car in the driveway to the steps, about five feet, if I turn around, he's going into the street. I know this is my problem, but there is a car that will be coming down at 25 miles an hour and it's a blind spot because there are so many cars lining the street. So this is unbelievably dangerous and there are four toddlers who are under three years old within four houses of my house. So it's not just me. All of us have kids that are like running to 47th Street during rush hour. It's terrifying. We chose to live in, we didn't choose to live on Capitola Road or bigger streets where, you know, I'm sorry if that's where some people have to live, but we chose to live somewhere that looked quiet. And these kids are going to be there growing up. Soon they're going to be on bicycles and even less trackable. So this is really a life and death situation. There's also a lot of people who are tourists that I think are directed maybe from the Marriott and the Best Western to walk to Capitola Beach to come down our street. It's so obvious. You have Camp Capitola. You have so many children in Jade Street Park that I think three mornings a week for how many, two months that that program runs, are walking down Topaz Street in a line trying to stay on the street with their teenage counselors, trying to keep 10, five-year-olds from wandering into the street. This is what we're talking about. This is why we're here after work, begging you guys to do something before someone gets killed. It's that simple. So please, again, just take that into consideration. We don't want to lose a child to a commuter who's checking their cellphone and not looking at the street. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Welcome, Mick. It's good to see you.
Good evening. Mick Ruth. I'm a 48-year resident of the one-way block of Crystal Street. And just to give a little history on that, in 1983, when the AAA building was a new project being developed, the residents on Crystal Street approached the council with a petition and requested that one-way designation to deter people from coming down Crystal to access the AAA building, coming down Crystal when they were exiting the AAA parking lot, and to discourage employees of that facility from parking on Crystal Street. And I have to say, it's been very effective in that regard. And, you know, at that time, there was no anticipation of the amount of traffic that was going to occur on Capitola Road, but it's certainly been beneficial for Crystal Street residents to stop the cut-through traffic. And we have 10 little kids just on that one block, all under 10 years old, and they all love to play in the street. But what I'd really like to address is the letter that I sent to Steve Jesperg and CC'd you guys about an idea that I suggested that I think is well worth a lot of consideration. And one of the things in the traffic counts for Topaz that I didn't see was the directional counts. So I imagine most of them are coming off of Jade Street. I'm sure there's some that come down 45th and make the left turn. And so what I suggested, 45th Avenue is a wide street. There's room for interspersed medians as you're near those intersections. Medians or even striped median could be put on 45th. There could be signs placed, "No left turn, 4:00 to 6:00 PM." You could even plant some street trees, which I think would possibly slow traffic down and beautify that area. And it would definitely stop some of that cut-through traffic that at least is coming off Capitola Road and making left turns through the jewel box, especially on Emerald Street. I think there was a lot of concerns about cut-through traffic on Emerald Street. So I don't know how many people go down 45th and make the left turn onto Topaz and then cut over to 47th over to Portola. I'm sure there's several cars that do that during the day. But this seems to me to be a simple solution to take care of at least part of the problem and not all that expensive and it really doesn't change the traffic flow that much. So that's my suggestion.
Great. Thank you, Mick. Next. Welcome back.
Thank you.
And my apologies for cutting the water debate off because I knew where it was going. So carry on.
Well, it might not have gone that way, but I appreciate it. Thank you.
As long as Bruce Daniels was still here. Go ahead.
I understand. Thank you. My name's Becky Steinbruner. I do not live in Capitola, but I have had some experience looking at traffic studies. And what I find interesting is that the Kimley Horn Traffic Study, if I understand it correctly, was only one day in February and one day in March. Is that right? So how good is the data, you know? And what day of the week was it? Was it a weekday? Was it a weekend? And I think that you really need to look at the good sample here. It's very limited data and I think you need to maybe listen more to the residents here. I think that it's also possible, I've gone to some traffic meetings like this in other areas of the county, and the jurisdiction has the ability to contact some of these app providers like Waze and tell them to take this off of their possible ways for people to be directed. And that is one way to at least keep new people or tourists from going through the area and that would give some relief to the residents. It's a symptom of the greater problem that we have in the county with the clogged freeway and the clogged arterials. And until we get some other ways to get around, we're going to see this in our neighborhoods, unfortunately, but there is this way that you can take to, so at least people not familiar with the area are not directed through the neighborhoods. And I'd also like to suggest that maybe the city look into providing a safer, separated walkway for the pedestrians and bikes and really invest some money working with the RTC to develop the rail trail bikeway and maybe podcars through your area to serve the tourists that need to get around. And that may also give your people some relief here. And to look at the use of roundabouts throughout the community so that the traffic that is on the streets can flow more freely and maybe they won't go out onto your neighborhood streets. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Jim Hobbs and I'd like to thank you all for attending to this. And I'd also like to commend Steve for being willing to stand up and take all the brick bats from the Topaz neighborhood. I live in the middle of the block between 45th and 47th. And in my experience, the largest part of the problem is in the afternoon with the traffic headed toward Watsonville in my neighborhood. And I think the data pretty well substantiates that and I won't belabor that point. And I also don't think there's any big surprises in the survey because, you know, people know that if you do offer us a little bit of relief on Topaz Street, those cars have to go somewhere. And of course, the big fear is you're going to increase the traffic on our street. So I get that, but it's still 10 times as many cars on one street as, I don't see any reason why we should be burdened with all of that. And the other thing about that is we can't know where those cars are going to go. And so what I was thinking about was if we went with item one, where you just had a one-way sign, you know, one-way signs on Topaz, then that's a minimally invasive project. And let's say we had a sundown date on it where we came back and revisited it and just see where the cars go. You know, if we don't know where they're going to go, then we're just operating on the fears of everybody of saying, "Oh, my God, the cars are all going to go down my street." But if we just give it a little trial balloon and see what happens, and if it's terrible, then we can do something else. But putting up a couple of signs is not a big deal. So.
Thank you.
That's my end.
Next. Karen.
Good evening, Karen Hanna. I'm on the traffic committee. And when the Topaz residents came to us the first time, I was really moved by their plight up there. And I personally haven't driven on Topaz since because I did occasionally do use that as a cut-through to my area. And I was just like, "Oh, my God, these poor people. This is just, it's terrible." And so I've been very supportive of them coming to the council, coming back to the traffic committee, having the traffic survey done, which I thought was amazing, the results. And my biggest disappointment was in the survey that went to the residents who said, "Yeah, it's really a problem and it really needs to be taken care of, but goddamn it, don't do it to me." And, you know, there's no way putting up a few signs, you know, "Please don't drive down here," whatever, is going to make any difference. People are not reading those signs and it makes a visual clutter in the area anyway. So I agree with the last speaker that, you know, there's some things that maybe can be done very inexpensively that will change the traffic patterns. It does seem to be, from my observation, being around in that area a lot, the whole congestion in that area is much heavier in the afternoon going towards Watsonville. So that's where the ideas should be focused. I think it should be a combination of one-way streets so that everything isn't driven to just one more block. But I just, I think something needs to go up, whether it's signage on one-way streets or barricades. It just, it needs to be spread out. It's just, it is unfair and there's no way that you can get any kind of pedestrian. I mean, I think Topaz should be one-way just to make the flow of traffic narrower so that there is more room for the pedestrians. Whatever else has to be done to accommodate this, I think that would be the most important part because it does help protect pedestrians and the cyclists. So, and, you know, anything you can do that then could be reviewed after a long enough period of time, I think would be a big improvement to give relief to these folks. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Karen. Next.
Yeah, I'm going to really approach this from a crass standpoint. I'm Keith Rushing. I'm a Realtor. And I have a client who has a, we have a listing there at Topaz and 47th. And I've had over 400 people that have come through that house and every one of them are concerned about the pass-through from 47th and Topaz. And, you know, what I'm talking about. And so I'm sitting there talking about what is the, so I did an evaluation on what the property values were from Topaz in the jewel box and everybody else. And the property on Topaz is 25% less in value than all the other jewel box. That's not right. And so with the traffic patterns, if you have to stop people from going in, then just put a stop. One thing I know about people is that all things are possible as long as you do it. You know, that's just the way it is. And so if you inconvenience the jewel box residents for a little bit and stop some of the, you closed off 49th, close off 47th and make them go someplace else, teach them to go a different way. You've got 45th, which is a big, big road. 47th is really well-trafficked. And so to protect the property values for those people on Topaz, I don't think you have any choice but to change what's going on to protect the very citizens that are in your community here. That's it.
Thank you. Next. Anyone else? Glenn. Welcome.
Hi. Glenn Hanna. You were told that Waze would adjust and remove the cut-throughs. They will not. That has been, time and time again, communities have had these problems and gone to these apps and said, "Please remove this cut-through." And their response is, "No, we won't." Because their whole existence has turned on explaining to people where they should cut through. Thank you.
Thank you, Glenn. Next. There we go. Welcome.
My name is Phil Stotts. I live on 4425 Diamond Street. That's right in the middle of the Capitola Shores Association. I've been listening, the survey was a very good one. It took into account the amount of traffic, the volume of traffic, the noise from the traffic, the speed of the traffic, all very good concerns. But one thing that was left out was the condition of the pavement and what the effect of diverting traffic back and forth around would have on the pavement. Now picture if you can a street paved with six-inch waffles about two inches thick. That's blocking. And this is what we have on Diamond Street, for instance, and other streets adjacent to that. Before traffic is diverted into that area, some consideration should be given to the condition of the pavement itself. Now Jade Street, it doesn't have waffling, but it's starting to show some signs of deterioration also. So I would just like to see some consideration given to that aspect of it. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Would anyone else like to address the council? If not, we'll bring it back. Peter.
Let me just put the timer on myself. So I'm...
So I would just like to see some consideration given to that aspect of it. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Would anyone else like to address the council? If not, we'll bring it back. Peter.
Let me just put the timer on myself. So something Steve said kind of alerted an alarm in my head, which was creating a policy on speed bumps before we do anything. And it just got a chill that we would send this back for more analysis and study and that we wouldn't make a decision. In the meantime, there's... Our safety of the people in Topaz is in jeopardy. So I suggest that perhaps you can make an interim decision, either with a one-way or some couple of speed bumps on Topaz to address the immediate problem, and then move forward from there. Like someone said, you can evaluate it and then come back and see where it is. But to send this back for more study, I think, would be a big mistake.
Thank you. Okay, we'll bring it back to the council.
Mr. Mayor, one of the comments, if you don't mind.
Go right ahead.
Thank you.
You don't have to put the timer on him. Thanks.
The first speaker tonight had talked about looking at the survey in different areas. And actually, we had done that. And so the graphs here are... It's the question about supporting the five options and data. So this is a graph that looks at just inside the toolbox, excuse me, without including Topaz. And you can see that there was not a lot of support for the five options. This is within the Jewel Box, including Topaz. And then we looked at Topaz only. And you see, and just like the speaker said, the support for the five options certainly is on Topaz Avenue. That's all I had. Thanks.
Thank you. Council, any questions of staff? Then who would like to start? Stephanie.
Well, when I first saw the... I really appreciate all the work of the Parking and Traffic Commission. They've really spent a lot of time discussing it, and I really appreciate all the time that the Citizens Committee spent developing the questions and evaluating them and so forth. When I first looked at the five recommendations, I thought they were all nutty. None of them would work. And I went through a kind of a thorough process of taking each one and walking that area and driving that area and really trying to see if any of them would work. And they didn't seem to work at all for me, that I didn't think for the community. I've been through a lot of traffic studies here and a lot of traffic problems and issues. And I think we'd all like to try to find some solution to this, but taking the traffic off one street will move it down to another street and another street and another street. So at this point, I can't see anything that I'd really be interested in except mixed idea, something like that too, and perhaps a few signs that would say, "No right turn on 4 to 6," or something like that, coming up that street. But some... I'd like to try a few easy things and see if that'll work, but I'm not interested in trying to change the traffic patterns there. It's... You just... You do it, and you're going to affect everybody else. So if anybody has any, you know, real concrete ideas of what will work there, I really haven't heard them yet. You know, lots of good suggestions, but nothing that I have heard that would be a clear solution to this problem tonight. So anybody else has any solutions? Good luck. But I think it's an unfortunate situation. When I bought my house on 42nd, spent a lot of time there, you know, to see what the traffic patterns were. And they sure have increased in recent years, and it sure is crowded. And we should sure look at that area for speed bumps, because some of my neighbors have asked about it. But then we get into... What's our policy with the city? Are we going to put speed bumps everywhere? And where? And who's going to pay for them, because they are expensive? So I'd like to try a soft approach at this point and see if there's anything we can do to try to help it a little bit.
Thank you, Stephanie. Jacques.
So I was glad to hear that many of the... First of all, I read through all the comments. I thought it was... You know, if you put all those comments together, I think it would be wonderful in terms of an understanding of the area. Every single possible problem at any particular corner in particular street was pointed out. So I thought it was a great response. So it gave me a greater appreciation of the difficulties that are in the Jewel Box and the surrounding areas, believe me. Couple of things that came out to me is that there seems to be a general understanding of the difficulties as a whole, realizing that if you solve something on your own street, it is going to push it off to somewhere else. So I think some of the graphs represented that understanding. So in a real sense, we understand that it's almost an intractable problem. Some things that came out really strong to me was the safety of the area, in particular for kids. One example that hit home for me was the junior guard. So my daughter was walking with those guides for about three or four years. I can't remember right now. But we had our daughter in junior guards, and I was very concerned about it, too. So I took some time off from work and just watched them doing their walk. And I wanted to make sure that the people that were taking care of the kids were, you know, very attentive, and I felt sure that they were, at least the day that I was there. So I know they get that kind of care, but still, as a couple of people pointed out, who knows which way the kid's going to go? It's a real possibility. So I think safety, if not for your kids, for yourself, walking the dog in the evening after work, anything on that level. Earlier comments were coming out of trade winds. There's no crosswalks. That's another one I'd like to point out. I think that Jade Street really does need some crosswalks to help people that are coming out of trade winds and other areas, maybe trying to get across to the community center. One suggestion I would like is to focus on safety. So anything... A couple of things that have come up, signs, things like, "This is a neighborhood for community members. There's kids. Watch out for kids," stuff like that. Anything that is going to help and focus on safety. One that came out is bulbous on some of the cross-streets, like Emerald, Jade, stuff like that, so that people slow down as they get into that particular two-stretch, that two-block stretch. Maybe in Topaz, that would significantly help, because you narrow and people go slower. Also pointing out 44 Sinclair's, that's a separate one, excuse me. I did have a question. This came up in the survey. What's this about buses unloading at 49th during the summer? There was a major comment about that that was blocking traffic, and I haven't experienced that. So do you know anything about that?
I haven't experienced it myself, but I do know that tour buses, bringing people into the Village, will park up in the 49th and Capitola Road area, on 49th, behind the Shadow Brook Extra parking lot.
Okay, so it's a little bit... Okay, got it. Okay. Another comment that came up that, Steve, I know you and I have talked about, and maybe this is something that could be explored, is having that as a permit parking area for the neighbors. I know this would have to tie into us providing shuttle service for the spillover that would not be actually there. They'd have to park somewhere else, and that's an expense. I think if we could take on, that might help improve the general circumstance for Jade Street, excuse me, for Jewel Box. I don't have a solution right now, but I think I agree with Stephanie that, and some of the speakers, if we try certain things right now that emphasize safety, which I think is the strong element that came out in people's comments, because that's what's going to hit us where we don't want it to. Our kids, ourselves, even safety of the cars that are parked along the street. I quite frankly don't know how to divert traffic. I think a lot of people would love to know the magic rule that would get people to not come through when they're trying to get home at night. I just don't know how to do that. So those are my comments.
Thank you, Jacques. Kristen.
Yeah. I want to thank everyone for coming out tonight and to the Traffic and Parking Commission and the Citizens Committee, and really everyone that's put their time and effort into this. My thoughts are... I like the idea of the signage that flashes and tells you how fast you're going. When I pass those kind of signs and they flash at me, I feel like it's almost a form of public shaming, because now everyone around me knows that I've been going too fast, and it makes me want to slow down. But signs in general, I'm afraid, don't have a lot... They're not incredibly effective. And the one I have in mind is, the other day I was on Claire's getting ready to turn right onto 41st, and there's a sign that says, "No right turn between... On red, between 10 and 6." And I sat there, and a line of cars behind me was honking and honking and honking because I wasn't turning. And I will admit, I caved under the pressure, and I turned... I turned on red. Don't tell the chief. But...
You're always in the back, right?
Yeah, I know. I know. You can check at me when we're done. I'll accept it. Because as I turn, I look in my rearview mirror, and every, you know, the three people that I could see turning after me also turned and didn't even give the courtesy of a California rolling stop as they came through that right-hand turn. And so my concern is that signs in and of themselves aren't incredibly effective. But I think ones that flash and get attention and let people and everyone around those people know that they're doing something they're not supposed to, that maybe that kind of public shaming aspect of it might make a bit of a difference. So I am interested in that. And I'm also interested in research into the option of speed bumps, not only in the Jewel Box, but, you know, if it's something we're going to consider now, it's something we may have to consider down the road. So it's worth considering an entire citywide policy at some point. And then finally, I agree that safety is the number-one issue here and that there's the potential that diverting traffic from one street is just going to make another street unsafe, and that's definitely not what we want here. But safety is definitely our priority. And then finally, I don't know if it's possible to do any kind of outreach to tour bus agencies, to tour agencies, to let them know, "Do not park up in Jewel Box," or even to put signs that say, "No tour bus parking," because those things are huge. And I can see how that alone would also have a major impact on the neighborhood. So those are the thoughts that I have right now.
Thank you. Ed.
I'm sorry that you people from Topaz are back here again, because this is a real problem, and you're looking for real solutions. And I don't think you've heard one yet. And I went and talked to a couple of residents on Topaz today, and I realized that if you actually thought, or if there was a belief that something was going to happen tonight, you would have rallied and brought more people. But that doesn't minimize, to me, the impact of what's going on on Topaz. Fact is, Highway 1 is a problem, and because of that, the deterioration of all the neighborhoods from Santa Cruz to Watsonville, the shortcuts, is continuing to grow in our town. And right now, I think about, you know, what brings people into this council chambers when we have problems and issues to deal with. And this is about the third biggest issue that I can think of since I've been on the council for five years. Some of you have been here for the skate park wars, and then there was a thought one time to build a hotel up on Depot Hill called Monarch Cove. And the place was packed with opposition, because when people don't want something, they come forward. What's disappointing me here is I'm disappointed in the survey, because the survey brought out the thing of my worst fear, and that is, "You have a problem, but it's on Topaz, so..." When I'm on Opal and Jewel and Garnet and Elbrol, I don't care, okay? Because it's your problem. And what's worse than that is government has failed you already. As you heard tonight, there was a problem with the AAA building, actually, 1979. So some people are pulling out a AAA, and they're cutting through on Crystal. I don't even know what the population of the AAA people work in there, but I'm going to guess it's less than 50 people. You have 1,300 people coming on your street. You know what your problem is? It's that Mike Termini doesn't live on your street. The mayor lived on Crystal. So he decided to get his council to pass an ordinance to change it to a one-way street. And I guarantee if I make a motion right now to put a one-way street on Topaz, which would definitely solve your problem, I will not get a second. So it puts us in a dilemma where, what do we do to give you real relief? Because that's what you deserve? Because what we're up here for is not to vote for somebody we like, or not to make a decision for somebody like... We're supposed to represent the entire city of Capitola. And I feel like there's... You live on that street with, like, six brothers and sisters. They're called Crystal, Emerald, Garnet, Jewel, Opal, and Topaz. And Topaz is getting beat up right now. And you know what the other brothers and sisters are doing? They left the building. Okay? And so I don't know... You know, it said what the answer is. I don't know that there is an answer. I do know that I appreciate our Parking and Traffic Commission for getting together, using some great thought at the pleasure of our treasurer, who it didn't cost any money to use them, and whereas we paid the consultants to bring more. But the consultants clearly pointed out, especially when we went to the last graph that Steve Jesper brought up, that said that, "Okay, let's not look at the results. Look at the results from Topaz and everybody else." Parking Traffic Commission came back with what I thought was some unique solutions. Are they going to work? I have no idea. I know that they voted 5 to 3 to approve it, and one of the guys voted against it because he thought what they had suggested wasn't harsh enough. So that means it actually was 6 to 2. And the other people, sometimes what happens in this town is people get an opinion, and they write it into the ground. They are not going to open up to look at it, and I guarantee it's not on their street. Okay? And so I have to kind of think, what is going to solve it? I know that there was some... You were getting false hope about somebody's going to alter the Waze program. I'm glad somebody came up and confronted that. That is not going to happen. That app exists to get people shortcuts. So no false hope. But I know that if you're going to solve real problems, you need real solutions. I know that the city of Los Gatos had a problem with people using cut-through traffic through their downtown to a point where it totally boxed the entire town. So they finally shut down the off-ramp on the end of Santa Cruz Avenue so people couldn't get on the freeway. Talk about an inconvenience. Guess what? Solve the problem. But your neighbors on the survey right there, they don't care about you. Okay? And so what I'm saying is, is that if we're going to realize that you are active citizens in Capitola, we need to make a global decision for the entire town that's going to give you relief, because we all could be impacted by that sooner or later. I mean, it just doesn't go through Topaz. It comes through. They take the shortcut. They come off Bromer. They come down Jade. They cut through. They get on Portola. They come through the Village. They shoot up Park. If you're living Depot Hill, I mean, people don't complain. They just suffer with it. If you're trying to get out of Depot Hill at 3 o'clock in the afternoon, good luck. Okay? Because these people will cut in front of you to save three seconds. Okay? So there's absolutely no care for that. So what are we going to do? Okay? Because, you know, I believe everybody up here is sympathetic towards you, and I honestly believe in their heart, they don't know what the solution is, because I don't think something great has jumped out. I am going to make a motion, because I do think we should try something rather than do nothing. I think you at least owe that, and the motion I'm going to make is, I think it's a cost of one of the programs. I'm going to actually make a motion to what the Parking and Traffic Commission recommended. Okay? Because when we came back here at the end of their presentation, we had high hopes. We all said, "We're going to form a committee. We're going to put some people in the Jewel Box on that committee." And we said, "Oh, no. We're going to put somebody in every street, because we thought that would give the best representation." That actually worked against you. So what I want to do is I'm going to make a motion that we adopt Option 4 of the Parking and Traffic Commission plan. I think it's a cost of about $2,500 to implement a bunch of ballards that are going to create an inconvenience for the rest of everybody in the Jewel Box, but nothing like the pain that you're talking about. And trust me, I do not want any child to get hurt or injured while we're procrastinating over what could happen. And if we don't make a big stand about cut-through traffic and send a message, it will get worse. I can tell you that it was up to me, and if I had the power to do what I would do, I would put a cement barricade across the end of Jade Street on 41st. It's not going to happen. I'm just telling you. This is... When you talk about Los Gatos taking a drastic action, because the cars are coming from Bromer, and what we wanted to do is go left to Capitola Road or right to Portola, but they don't. They come down Jade. And you're going to hear about... You're going to hear about speed bumps? Forget it. They cost money. They're not going to work. People fly over the speed bumps. But if they didn't come down Jade, problem solved. Does that inconvenience everybody? Yes. But the motion I'm making right now is for inconvenience. And the only thing that I'm really willing to try at this point is that motion. So my motion is to adopt Plan 4 for the Planning Commission's recommendation for a Ballard presentation.
Would you describe Option 4, Steve, before we ask for a second?
Is that in our packet?
No.
Do you want to... Ed, you want to read what Number 4 is? If it's not in our packet?
I've got a picture of it. So Option 4 puts diagonal barriers alternating direction along 47th so that nobody can drive all the way through on 47th or all the way through on any of the cross-streets, Topaz, Opal, Jewel, Garnet, Emerald, Crystal. So what happens if we come down 49th and we turn left onto Opal Street? We have to... The barricades will prevent us from going through on Opal. We'll get here, and it actually splits you back out onto 49th. Every... Each one of these streets becomes... Each of the streets becomes a loop street that takes you back to the street that you entered it on. on. So the obvious impacts are going to be on Capitola Road. These intersections, particularly at 49th and Capitola Road and 45th and Capitola Road, will become more impacted. Residents in this area are going to have to use Capitola Road to go in and out of the area. And these, to get to the Village, are going to have to use those. You're not going to be able to go down 47th Avenue. So that is Option 4.
I'll second it.
So we have a second, and before we take a vote, I get to talk. So, I'm hearing some interesting ideas here. A lot of them are ideas that are basically no ideas, just not to do anything. And I think it's going to take a multi-pronged approach. I, I'm on the fence on this one, frankly. It's really extreme. And I still like the idea that you came up with, Ed, several months ago. If we made Jade Street one-way towards 41st Avenue, it's a lot less money than this, and it keeps all the traffic out of the jewel box that's coming down Jade. And that makes people take a left or a right coming down Bromer. And that's just a few signs away. Anyway, that's for another discussion. I think the, the speed bump issue has to come back for a policy, because we do get asked for that frequently, and we need to have a policy for it. I don't, I think local traffic-only signs just make us feel good, and no one else, because we'll be the only ones who are actually paying attention to them. I like Mick's idea about the, the no-left turn. And I'd like to maybe get the temperature of the council on a 30-day trial to make Topaz one-way from 47th to 45th for one month.
I'm in.
And, and, and let me, let me flesh this out a little bit. This is, it's going to be a, if someone were to make such a substitute motion, my idea is to have a 30-day test, one-way from 47th to 45th, and during that time, we take traffic counts. Sorry, Mr. Treasurer. Somebody's going to pay somebody to count traffic. And not just on Topaz. I want to do the same traffic counts that we did before, and see how much that affects the rest of the neighborhood.
Well, you better do Opal, because that's where they're going.
Well, maybe.
There, I can guarantee, there's no maybe about it. If you come down Jade and you block off Topaz, they're going to turn on Opal. They're not going to fight the speed bumps going down 45th. And, and my apologies to anybody, anybody that lives in Opal right now, my apologies. But, you know, I, I, I don't want to cut in your time, but this is a desperate situation. I sense how desperate this is. And I would support 30 days as a trial, because it will guarantee, do one thing, give you 30 days of relief. And then after that, it may come back, but, but what it will show is that these people will find, it's like water. You can't stop it, you can divert it. And that's what traffic is. They will go to Opal. And so if we're going to do a test for 30 days, put the, put the, the readings on at least...
Topaz, Opal, and Jewel.
And Topaz.
Well, and the reason that I, I'm suggesting this, and there's nothing against the folks on Opal, is that at this point, we keep guessing where the traffic is going to go. And it may very well all go down Opal, and maybe half of the traffic that would go down Topaz goes straight to Capitola Road. Maybe some of the, some of it bleeds off on the other two streets that have one-way going towards 47th. But we don't know till we try it. How difficult is a 30-day one-way trial, and is it madness? Because I've been known to come up with madness ideas.
As far as signage, I think it's, it's pretty minimal. It's a do-not-enter sign at Topaz and 45th, maybe some, you know, barricades and whatnot to make sure people realize it. Traffic counts, I actually think we should probably do traffic counts before we do it and after it, and we do it on all the streets up to that, along there. Not just stop at Opal and Jewel, but go all the way up to, well, Crystal goes one-way already. How crazy is it? I think it's the only way we're going to find out. You know, the other, adding to that would be to make all those streets one-way toward 45th Avenue for 30 days. That's going to just impact the, the Capitola Road and 45th, but we wouldn't have to all these other countings, because we, just another option.
I'm just trying to creep up on it.
That's fine.
Mr. City Manager?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I, I understand the desire to do something, and I understand the notion of trying to test things. And I think that we should be a city that can try things out and experiment and see what the results are. I would caution the council, though, on tackling this just on Topaz, because I think you're, my prediction, my very strong prediction is, is that Opal will come unglued very quickly. And it will be because direct, or direct result of an action that we took. So if we were going to test this, my recommendation would certainly be to give the Public Works, the Director, the authority to pull the plug. If we see what the results are really quickly after a week or two, and then we can take a look at what those results are and come back to the council. I would hate to have a situation where we ended up in a 30-day test period that was really causing problems for the Police Department and for Public Works Department, when the results were immediately apparent after, say, a couple days.
What, would you give me an example of a situation that would make us stop this test after a week?
I think a situation would be if we ended up with getting...
300 phone calls from Opal.
Thank you.
Jacques?
So, I'm a little worried about 1,300 cars that, here to now, have gone down Topaz. And what kind of congestion there is going to be at that corner, where they're going to turn left, they're used to going straight. I'd like to have presence of our Police Department, or some of the CIP groups, so that there's something there to caution, something there to maybe answer questions, something there to deal with any kind of issues that come out. I, I, I don't want to turn this experiment on and just sort of let it go free-flow without any attention on the city's part.
More thoughts?
You know, after having the discussion, I respect your idea to suggest the one-way. In my heart, I don't believe that's the answer. Okay? And I, and I know that, that I, I tend to support the city manager's opinion. This is going to, it's going to blow up on us, sooner than later.
Right.
I, I would like to go back to my motion that received a second, and I'm going to...
It, it stands.
And, and, but I'm saying, I, I originally had given you a consensus on the temporary 30 days. And I think it's, this is something that was been, the, the other plan was talked about, it was tested by, you know, vetted by the Planning, the Parking Commission. I believe it has some substance. The rest is a little bit of fishing. And I love you for your willingness to want to go experiment. I just don't think, I, I strongly believe that a one-way street on, on any of those streets is not going to solve it unless you actually did them all. And I haven't got time to rationalize what that would be like.
Could you bring back Option 4 up on the screen, please?
I'd like to make a comment.
Hang on. Thank you.
Sorry, there it is.
There it is. Jacques?
Yeah. So I've seen a solution like this in other cities, and one I think of is Berkeley. And initial complaints about our streets are being blocked off, or traffic's being diverted, and it's an inconvenience. What it ends up creating, in the long run, is a really tighter-knit community, because you don't have a lot of cars going through. So this is what I'm thinking about. When we initially came here, we wanted to buy a house in Jewel Box, my wife and I, because we saw that as the kind of community we wanted to be in. You know, no sidewalks, you could walk down the street and stuff like that. Unfortunately, it was too expensive for us. So we bought somewhere else. But that's what Berkeley got. And I think something like this is what you'll end up with. You'll, you'll end up with some, you'll, your habits will change. I've been on parking commissions before, and it takes four, six months, and then your habits change, and, and you're, you're fine with it afterwards. So I think in the long run, with this kind of, they'll be almost like cul-de-sacs. You'll like it. But we have to see. So if you support us in this, I think, you know, that would be great. We come up with a solution.
Steve, what's the, what's the cost of Option 4?
I don't have a firm estimate. Using ballards and stuff, we're probably talking on $5,000.
But are we talking about rubber ballards?
Talking about the glue-down ballards that can be popped up.
The glue-down rubber ballards?
Yeah.
The kind people can drive through?
Yeah.
How about the cement ones?
I just, I'm just thinking back to the, the great Ballard experiment on Stockton and the Village, that lasted about that long before, you know, a one-ton truck came and decided they didn't like those ballards anymore.
The more, so guardrails, barricades, portable K-rail.
Ooh.
All those add to the expense.
Hard to ride over a K-rail.
You can do the water-filled K-rail, it's easier to move around.
Give me an idea that, the next step, level of cost on that? I just want to try and feel what I'm getting into here.
You know, I think we, K-rail or, or something similar, probably, again, soft top my head, 25 grand.
Councilmember?
Yeah. Is this something that would, could possibly be done also on a trial basis? With, for example, the kind of things we use to block off the Esplanade when we have, you know, art and wine and whatnot? Can those be used to block these streets for a trial? Or are we talking about permanent?
This is a trial. This is a six-month.
We are talking about it. Okay.
I think the Parking Commission's recommendation was a six-month trial.
It was a trial period. I don't remember the period.
And I'm thinking that six months is more than adequate to evaluate this.
Yeah. So regarding using just the barricades, those are pretty easy to move. I think we need to have something more, more permanent, whether it's a glue-down pylon or, or the K-rail. I'd be happy to kind of investigate and, and not say I want to return, but get some costs and, and work it out with the city manager.
So you can bring us back costs on this? And I'm thinking of the first step as glue-down ballards, his next step is K-rail.
Yes. I can come up with costs.
Stephanie, you have something?
I still have some concerns about this traffic pattern, and cars going down there and having to turn around and go back, turn around and go back, turn around and go back. You know, there's, there's, you know, a lot of people that go on those streets that may want to go that way.
You know, I, I want to go back to Jacques' comment. I've been stuck in the Berkeley maze, the city, the neighborhoods.
You know what I'm talking about.
I was instantly discouraged from ever being in Berkeley. But I think we should call the question. And can we refine it, so that as far as the methodology that's, that, you know, how do we start? If we're, if it's not effective, we go to the next level of barricades?
I, I think what, what Steve just relayed is, is, I'm okay with that. It's like, this is a proposal to do, adopt this plan for no more than six months. Starts out with plastic or rubber ballards, the one that we glue down. And if those prove to be ineffective, then we'll upgrade to something more substantial.
Can I comment on?
Oh, wait, who, who seconded out there? I'm sorry. I, I totally, I completely missed the election results. I'm sorry.
I want to hear the city manager's comment. The city manager's grabbing the microphone. As a suggestion, we will be doing our mid-year budget hearing coming up in a couple meetings. And so my recommendation would be, if this is the trajectory we want, want to go down, directing the Public Works Department to come back with some temporary options and kind of what the test period would be, rather than trying to sit here right now on the fly and figure out exactly what that looks like. That, then at mid-year budget, you can make an appropriation to get it done and give the Public Works.
Well, I'm going to, I'm going to push against that, in that we gave you exactly what the test period is going to be. The motion is for six months. Second is, I think Ed was very clear in his motion that it's going to start with glue-down ballards, and then move to K-rail, which is the next level of expense. So at that, I'm going to call the question without further comment. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Harlan?
No.
Sorry, excuse me, councilmember. Councilmember Bejrand?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Botor?
Yes.
Mayor?
Aye. Passes.
It passes. Passes four to one.
Well, I hope you people all come back in four months when there's burning torches and pitchforks in this audience, okay? And, and we'll take a five-minute while the jewel boxers move their way out, unless you really want to hear about the thing on Claire Street, which I don't think you do. Unless you really want to hear about the thing on Claire Street, which I don't think you do.
Annually, the owner will have to provide a report to the city to, just to ensure that the unit is being rented to a Section 8 voucher. So then we're ensuring that it's rented at the low of the affordable rate and on an annual basis they have to report. Next, within the development, so the, within parking standards, the state density bonus law supersedes Capitola's requirement. So, within the Capitola standard, if there's four or more units, you're required to provide 2.5 spaces per unit. Under the state density bonus law for this project, each is maxed out at between two to three bedrooms, just two spaces for each unit. So, within the proposed, the 4199 Claire's Street, the ownership units actually does comply with Capitola's standard. There's three spaces for each unit. The neighboring property at 4205 Claire's with the triplex up front is proposing two spaces per unit, which is consistent with the state density bonus law. So, as I said, the state density bonus law supersedes the local standards and the project could not be denied based on parking when it complies with the state density bonus law. In going through this application, there was, during the first planning commission meeting, there's quite a few comments from the public regarding parking. The planning commission asked staff to add a condition that the parking spaces within the garages shall be utilized for parking vehicles on site. This is one that's tricky in monitoring over time, but hopefully it'll be effective within the HOA and self-policed within the development. So that condition has been added. Next, I'm going to run over the design of this project. So really, it's been developed to complement, all the buildings complement each other. On the first story of each building, there's stucco finish. The upstairs of each building has a different exterior finish such as shingles or battened board, horizontal siding. And then the triplex will be stucco with updated paint. They're also proposing new railings that will relate to the other railings on the other buildings, new garage doors, and the doors and windows throughout the development will complement the neighboring building. So, this will be the view from Claire's Street of what the buildings will look like. This is the two units in the, in the back, units four and seven, so the two duplexes to the rear of the properties that really relate to one another. This is the, the triplex, and the planning commission during their review asked for some screening over the block sump wall that's on the front of the building. So the project was, the applicant updated the project to include a new trellis with, or new lattice with lilac vines growing on it, and trellis. Also during planning commission, there was concern about, well, what if one project does not get developed and the other one does? To ensure that the, and the applicant has made it clear that they do plan on moving forward with this project very soon, and to hold, to tie a condition to it, we added a condition that the building permits must be submitted at the same time, and also that a certificate of occupancy will not be released if the other property is not under construction. So, there is conditions to require that these are submitted at the same time and that they're both being developed before one gets occupancy. Other changes that occurred at the planning commission level within the plan was, I mentioned the block wall on the triplex being updated with the lattice and lilac vine. Three new trees were proposed for additional screening between unit seven and the neighbor, and also screening the trash and making sure there was a place for the screen trash for each of the units. So that was done as well. With that, staff is recommending approval of the state density bonus application for 4199 and 4205 Claire's, and I'm available for any questions you may have.
Any questions?
Jacques. I was very impressed with the detailed arbiters' report. Did we get an independent look at that?
We did not.
Okay.
Could you define the moderate income condo unit and low-income rental? What means testing is there? What is the, what is the income range?
So it's based on the county standard for income levels, and for the moderate income, I believe it said 80% of the median income level for the county, and low income is lower than the 80% threshold. So, I, off the top of my head, I'm not remembering exactly what that is.
Okay. And then how do they set the price on the moderate income condo?
So they'll, they'll identify what the median income is for the county, and then they'll take that 80% number and put that into the calculations to figure out what a family, for that exact proposal, what it could go on the market for to, for a family at 80% of the median income level to purchase that home and not utilize more than, I want to say 30% of their income.
Understood. I just wanted to establish that. We'll open this up to the public now. Is the applicant in the audience?
Thank you, council members, and thank you, Katie, for helping us through this process. My name's Bill Kempf. I'm a local architect, and I'm also a partner in this project on the 4199 Claire's portion. I've been involved with this property since 2004. A good friend of mine lived there, and when he passed away in 2013, a couple of his friends got together and we purchased the property from his family and, and were trying to develop it for ourselves. And we, we reached out to the neighbor, actually, we reached out to both neighbors because on the other side, there's a great parcel that's been undeveloped that goes all the way from, from Claire's Street all the way back to, I think it's Trotter behind it. But we were able to work together with the Hazen family, and I've spent a lot of time working with them and trying to meet their needs, and I think we've come up with a really great project, and we're happy to provide the affordable housing and work through that. And if you have any questions about it, I'm happy to answer them.
Any questions for the applicant? Seeing none? Are you have a question, Jacques?
Yeah, actually, a comment.
No, hold your comments so we talk.
Sorry.
Thank you, Bill. I'm going to open this up to the public. Anyone who would like to come up and address the council on this particular project, please step forward. Hello?
Good evening. Becky Steinbruner. I was looking in the back for the page that Mr. Ron Duncan from SoCal Creek Water District mentioned earlier that referenced the impact on water, groundwater resources that this project would have. He said it was something about unavoidable. So, one issue that I want to make clear is that there is a water, groundwater overdraft, and so when new dense developments like this are, are added to the, the use of the water, I think it's, I have so many times seen that the applicants don't understand that they have to go through this whole water demand offset requirement that the water district has, and they show up at the water district livid because they've been given the permits and they're ready to go, and then there's this whole roadblock. And I will tell you that SoCal Creek Water District only has something like four acre feet a year in offsets that they're allowed to give out. It's not much. And so I don't know if this is one of the properties that could be grandfathered. There do exist a few of them, but what I would like to ask that, that your jurisdiction does is put the water department on your Plan Check status routing list, because then it's very clear throughout the process to the applicants what they're going to have to do.
That's exactly what the process is. They have to receive a will-serv letter before they start construction. So, you have just predicted the future.
Well, thank you, because that's not how it works at the county level, and, and I'm still seeing people show up all the time.
No doubt.
So, please take into consideration, and I hope the applicant will too, that there is a restriction on water. It is serious, and there have been many times when many people have suggested a moratorium on building because we are in such dire straits with water right now.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else in the public like to speak?
Greetings.
Hello, my name is Evan Soroki with Santa Cruz Yimby, and I am coming here to, on behalf of my group, to support this project. I believe it's a, be a great addition because it is in a great location, close to public transportation and jobs and biking routes, and I fully support the use of the state density bonus, and especially because it provides two onsite affordable units. So I would hope that you would approve the project. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Then I'll bring this back to the council. Ed?
Just a couple of quick comments. First of all, I love your project. Thank you for bringing it to us. Second of all, I want to commend the planning commission for making the improvements that they did and making it even a better project. I support this project. Make a motion that we accept staff recommendation.
Second. Kristen?
Yeah, I love the project. I appreciate that there's going to be affordable units, especially, you know, I know that the waiting list to get a Section 8 voucher is incredibly long, and those who have them right now have a really hard time finding anywhere that they can use it. So this is really, I'm really happy to see that. And then I just also wanted to make a quick comment that the, during the water presentation, the notice about something that was going to have unavoidable impact on the groundwater supply, that had to do with the zoning code update and not this particular project, as I understand it. So I just wanted to make that comment. I'm excited about the affordable housing. I'm excited about the project. Thank you.
Jacques?
So, I liked the project too. I've walked this site multiple times, and I like the way that architect, I guess it was you, figured out how to use what was existing and then on the duplexes mirror it, and, and the one that's going to be the apartment house, fitting that in with duplexes across, or individual units across. I, I think it was great planning. I don't think it came about that easily. I think you had to think about this for a while. I'd be willing to bet. And glad, Eric, that you're coming out here. You're going to be doing some pounding of the hammer. I think that's great, and I'm going to come by and see, see how it's going. I look forward to this project. And in particular, I, I'm very happy that you're going to be providing affordable units. This is something the community needs, and I wish more architects and builders and contractors would take advantage of the bonus and actually provide it. We do need it. Thanks.
I'd like to echo the rest of the council, and there are, there are dense projects that do not fit in Capitola, and there are dense projects that do. This is a perfect project for our community. It's, it's just enough and not too much. It's well-designed, it's attractive, certainly, certain it will be well-built, and with that, I will entertain a motion.
Oh, we have a motion?
I made a motion in a second.
You did?
Yeah, yeah. While you were talking with Chris.
Don't motion while I'm talking to Chris.
Well, I made the motion and he's second, and then the next thing you know, you were...
Yeah, you're sitting there talking to Chris the whole time.
Some dude is smoke-filled backroom deals over here. Come on.
We never get along, guys.
I'm glad the city clerk acknowledged that...
I haven't, I haven't.
Thank you.
Good, okay. Block out the last part of that tape, and like, let's have a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. See you later. Go forth and build.
Thank you.
And you're even going to sell the palm tree, so I thought that was good.
We'll move on to the city attorney's report. City attorney, what is the status of our legal status?
Good evening, council members. I'm not, you know how to turn on this light?
Oh, we have PowerPoint presentation and everything.
This is a, a new concept, the city attorney's annual report. It's our, it's our first annual, annual report, and depending on how it goes, it might be the last. I actually think it's a great idea to have a periodic check-in with the city council and to discuss the work of my office. As you know, we're a private law firm. We're a firm of nine practicing attorneys, six of whom are full-time, which is a pretty big law firm for Santa Cruz County standards. We have other clients, of course, but I went back through some of the work that we did over the course of the past year, and at some point in time, all nine of the lawyers in our office have done work on Capitola matters. So, so we have a team of attorneys that work for you. We handle work from staff and multiple departments of the city on a daily basis, and yet unlike the Public Works Department or the Police Department, you don't see us on the street, you don't see our, our work in progress for the most part. You see me here twice a month, and you read email message from, messages from me periodically. So, hopefully this will give you more of a sense of, of what we're about. Because it's the first annual report, I intend it to be sort of a high-level flyover, and what I have in mind for future additions is to delve into specific matters with a little bit more particularity and to talk about some, some pressing issues that are coming up, but I'll do a general overview tonight and, and touch upon a few specific So, first of all, what is the role of the city attorney? It's not to operate... Spacebar. Oh, spacebar, excuse me. I guess we'll have to do that for each slide, which I, I'm going to move fast through these slides, but the, the role, we're public officials, like the city council, and our role is spelled out in state law, both in the government code and in the, and in the municipal code of the city of Capitola, and it's also set forth in particular in the legal services agreement that we have with the city. Want to just leave that page up and?
Oh, sure.
Click down? Yeah, we'll just, we'll just scroll down that way. As described in the municipal code, we're required to monitor and keep the city council, city manager informed on significant legislation, process insurance matters and claims, attend council meetings and board and commission meetings as needed, represent the city in litigation and matters before other agencies, prepare and promote state and federal legislation, something that we don't do very often, process annexation proceedings, another thing that we don't do very often, and prepare ordinance summaries. It's kind of odd that the municipal code spells out preparation of ordinance summaries but not ordinances themselves, because we either write or assist in drafting or review and edit all ordinances and whatnot that come before the city council. Under the terms of our contract, the legal services are divided up into general legal services and special legal services. General legal services are provided on a flat monthly fee basis. Special legal services are provided on an hourly fee basis and are handled as assigned by the city council. I look back at the, the contracts that we've had over the years, and when we started in 2002, we were hired at a flat monthly fee of $10,000 per month, and that amount gradually increased over time to, I believe, $13,000 in late 2008. And then in 2009, with, when the recession hit, we scaled it back to $11,130 a month, and that's, that's what our rate has been in effect since 2009, so. General legal services include really all of the day-to-day legal work of the city, all regular city council meetings we attend, and special meetings as, as needed, attend planning commission and other board and commission meetings on request, prepare or review all contracts and approve as a form, and legal content, all, all of those. Prepare, review ordinances, resolutions, and other legal documents such as grant deeds, easements, encroachment agreements, that sort of thing. Provide day-to-day legal advice to the city manager, the city clerk, the department heads, and all city departments, respond to legal questions from council members, commissioners, and staff, review all agendas, agenda reports and other materials, meet on request with council members and staff, either in person or by phone, provide training on various issues, including net, new council member orientation and the AB 1234 ethics training, and monitor changes in state and federal statutory laws and case law, and provide advice and recommendations concerning those areas. Special legal services are primary litigation and code enforcement, and again, those are on an as-assigned basis. As you know, for most liability-related issues due to the insurance that the city maintains through the Monterey Bay Area Insurance Services Authority, I believe it's called, MBasia, those cases are assigned to an adjuster and then assigned to outside counsel for liability coverage. I'm going to do just a brief overview of what is encompassed within municipal law, and it's going to be very brief, so I'll move through these slides really quickly, because it's getting late, and I also just want to sort of cover the whole scope of the, the different issues, and then I'll come back and touch upon some specific Capitola-related items. But starting with what is the nature of municipal corporations as initially spelled out in the California Constitution. Basically, under the police power, the city has the authority by the Constitution to make and enforce all laws for the purpose of protecting public health, safety, and welfare. So that's a broadly described power in the California Constitution. Other parts of the Constitution then place limitations on that authority for municipal, for municipalities. And then the general laws of the state also further constrain and explain and elaborate on those, those various powers. Another area of the law that we deal with on a regular basis concerns open government and ethics, and this is the Brown Act, the agenda requirements, the limitations on what can be discussed both in a city council meeting and outside of a city council meeting that pertains to city business, California Public Records Act, and various ethics laws and regulations that affect local governments, such as the Political Reform Act, your Form 700s, your recusal when there are conflict of interest issues that arise, that sort of thing. Other restrictions under Government Code, Section 1090, for self-interested contracting, common law conflicts of interest, and also the specific ethical obligations of a public agency attorney as opposed to an attorney that resents private entities or parties. We deal with a lot of issues with regard to elections laws, both for city council or other offices, including qualifications of candidates, initiatives in referenda, campaign regulations, and restrictions on campaign spending. Deal with a variety of issues relating to personnel and employment, recruitment and hiring, wage and hour laws, drug testing laws, privacy rights, anti-discrimination and harassment regulations, lots of various issues pertaining to municipal finance and economic development, including taxes, fees, and charges, and the restrictions on those under state law, including statewide ballot measures like Prop 13, Prop 218, and Prop 26, restrictions on expenditures of public funds, and something that Capitola's not had to grapple with, but a lot of other communities in California have, have in fairly recent years, is the issue of municipal bankruptcy. All manner of issues pertaining to public works contracts, contracting for city goods and services, insurance and indemnity agreements and, and issues. All manner of issues relating to public property, including acquisitions and disposition, purchase and sale agreements, issues relating to implied dedication, I'm going to talk about that a little bit more, and regulations and laws under state law and under our municipal code for streets and sidewalks, and obligations relating thereto. Various regulations pertaining to businesses that the city regulates, including adult business restrictions, alcohol and marijuana businesses, particularly with the recent passage of the AUMA, restrictions on gambling establishments, taxi cabs, rent control is a topic that's been talked about locally, not so much in Capitola, but in another jurisdiction that I work with, and that's being brought forward as a potential ballot measure. Of course, wireless communications facilities, which is a big topic that we've dealt with over the past year. And then personal conduct regulations, and these are intertwined with a lot of constitutional issues. When you talk about regulations on soliciting, leafleting signs, displays of banners, handbills, regulations on camping and RV parking in, on city streets and in neighborhoods, noise and nuisance regulations, animal regulations. Of course, we deal with a variety of issues relating to land use, including the general plan, zoning regulations, housing laws, growth management, regulations of moratoria, and fees and exactions, and the Coastal Act sort of acts as a, a component of all of that in the coastal zone. Laws concerning protecting the environment, both for land use issues and for water quality and environmentally sensitive habitat areas, like some of the parts of Capitola along SoCal Creek. Another couple of topics, code enforcement is something that we deal with on a regular basis, and then laws that relate, relate to city liability and, and litigation. That's my sort of flyover of the various topics of municipal law, and now I'll touch upon some of those that affected the city of Capitola in the past year. First, with respect to the Police Department, a lot of the work that we did with the Police Department had to do with Public Records Act requests and other records requests. These are records for, relating to calls for service, arrest reports, and criminal prosecutions. We review and assist the Police Department in reviewing and redacting all privileged and exempt materials under, that are identified in the scope of Public Records Act requests and discovery requests that are filed in criminal proceedings. Provide advice on subpoenas and discovery in, in criminal cases. Advise the Police Department with regard to proposed civil compromises and plea offers and options for dealing with those types of matters. Advice regarding grand jury inquiries and the city's obligations when it's contacted by investigators from the grand jury or representatives of the grand jury, and pitches motions, which are motions for discovery of peace officer personnel records that arise in criminal matters. A big issue that dealt with, or that the Planning Department dealt with in 2017 had to do with wireless communication facilities. First of all, drafting a comprehensive wireless communications facilities ordinance update that we were extensively involved with, the development of a submittal checklist and general design requirements for wireless communication facilities, which we assisted the staff with, also with evaluation of wireless communication facilities applications, and ongoing advice and research on those types of issues, both on private property and the right-of-way, and of course, monitoring new state and federal legislation relating to wireless communication facilities, including SB 649, which was pending before the legislature, which we monitored closely. We were actively involved with League of Cities and other agencies in opposing, and fortunately Governor Brown, back in October, vetoed that legislation after it was passed by the legislature. Worked significantly on the zoning code update ordinance, the, which is the next item on your agenda, the accessory dwelling unit ordinance, the cannabis ordinance update, which in my view is kind of a work in progress as the new recreational marijuana laws are developed and advanced in California. I'm sure we'll be revisiting those issues probably within the next year or so. Issues relating to subdivisions and dividing property under the subdivision map act and under city ordinances, affordable housing requirements, including density bonus matters, including the item that you just heard on your agenda immediately prior to this item. Issues relating to the Capitola mall that you apparently heard some information about last night, and we did a significant amount of work and had extensive discussions with the city manager over the course of the past year about what is going to happen with the mall and how is that going to move forward, and I also attended a planning commission meeting. And I also attended a planning commission meeting and spoke to the commission about that, and provided and did a significant amount of analysis about a potential building moratorium there to use that as an opportunity to evaluate the long-term strategies for how to make the mall a viable continuing part of the community. Public Works Department, I'm right in the process right now of working through a package of information for the Public Works Department on changes in prevailing wage laws that have gone into effect recently, and that will require a review of the standard front-end specifications for all public works contracts to make sure that those are all current and up to date. We dealt with a lot of issues involving encroachments in the city's rights of way. One of those items, which has been ongoing over the past year, will be coming before the council in March for a hearing. Looking at the Esplanard Park erosion that we experienced over the course of the past winter, and planning for or developing strategies for how we're going to deal with that. Advice on wharf maintenance and Coastal Act issues, and a couple of odd questions that don't really involve city business but affect the city involved. A question about the rights of the public to areas of the public right-of-way that are not maintained by the city but are maintained by adjacent property owners, sort of a dispute between neighbors about walking over or through somebody's front yard garden. Another involved, sort of an interesting one, but it was really a private property owner's issue, but related to the city, was a variance had been granted by the city to allow an encroachment into a right-of-way, but as a condition of the variance, the city required a recordation of a notice of encroachment, so that when and if the city needed the right-of-way for a public purpose, the encroachment would be removed. Unfortunately for the property owner who had planned to use the equity in that property to pay for his retirement and wanted to obtain a reverse mortgage, the lender flagged that as a cloud on title and wouldn't approve the reverse mortgage. So we worked with the lender to clarify what actually that was, and eventually, I believe, the guy was able to obtain his reverse mortgage. Some of the issues that have involved the city manager, the City Clerk's Department, are the Monterey Bay Community Powers, JPA, recently looked at a question involving the proposed rate increase for solid waste services, looked at some First Amendment issues regarding businesses that put their business name or logo on equipment that's rented and taken out onto the beach, questions relating to vehicle charging stations, credit card processing fees, recycling centers, and that implicates the California Beverage Container Recycling and Litter Reduction Act, which is something that I was not familiar with, but is a fairly dense bit of legislation. There's the recent Divka ordinance, the dog microchip ordinance, and a lot of questions and issues relating to the proposed Capitol library, including the agreement that you have with the county for the funding of the library construction, issues relating to property acquisition, potential property acquisition to expand the site for parking and whatnot, questions relating to fundraising for the library and providing assistance to the friends of the library in their fundraising efforts. We currently have two pending litigation matters, the Water Rock versus Capitol case involving the parking lot construction in the former Pacific Cove, Mulholland Park, and a code enforcement matter involving the property at 4960 Capitol Road. Because those are pending, I'm not going to go into detail on those cases, but I will say that with regard to the code enforcement matter, it's been pending for quite some time, but we've begun to implement a new strategy that I'm cautiously optimistic will see that case come to resolution within the next year. That's an optimistic prediction on my part, and I have the same prediction with regard to the Water Rock case, which is now pending more than a couple of years, so that's our pending litigation. Lastly, I want to just talk about a couple of challenges that I see on the horizon. They don't, they're not identified per se as legal issues, but legal questions and issues will arise from, I think, all of them. This is not necessarily in order of immediate concern or of importance, but just some that I think are certainly going to be, that we're going to have to deal with. Of course, what is the long-term future for the Capitol Mall with economic trends, the way they are going, with the fate of malls around the country, with different property owners, with different interests in regard to how to exploit their own interests in the property? We saw a foreshadowing or portent of the things to come with regard to the future use of the RTC right-of-way. I didn't describe that as the rail trail or of the greenway, but it is an RTC right-of-way, and we had a mini version of the same debate at the Santa Cruz City Council meeting last week as well, or earlier this week, rather. I think the Tressel is a separate issue that has its own unique challenges for the City of Capitol, and it's continuing to decline in its condition, and I think the Capitol City Council may be called upon to try to initiate some action, to try to deal with that. I think that the current status of the cannabis ordinance will probably be something that we talk about in the fairly near future, as cannabis businesses continue to try to move into Capitol, and some of which apparently are probably already doing so without necessary permits. Certainly future challenges with regard to revenues and expenditures and trends of those two that are not necessarily going in the same direction. I'm concerned about a recent spate of lawsuits that are being brought around California under the California Voting Rights Act to try to force cities to go to district elections. Really, it's based upon a fairly recent amendment to that statute that makes it just fertile ground for, you know, attorneys that are looking to exploit the possibility of getting attorney's fees, and a lot of cities are being sued at present. Some other challenges that I think will affect the city are issues regarding the federal government and just emerging, you know, some of the recent actions that have been taken by the new administration, and particularly in regard to regulatory agencies and how they are being impacted by the changing of the presidential administration and its spillover effects that will come down to local governments, to the extent it hasn't already. And finally, I guess I'll just say that I think that Capitol is prudent, that Capitol is staying on the sidelines of some of the litigation that's been initiated recently with regard to the petroleum industry and the fossil fuel industry, but I do think that having been involved in some of that for another agency, I've been reading a lot about the science, and it's very sobering, and I think with the bluff top, the cliffs that you have here, the village, the wharf, if, you know, as predicted by the vast consensus of climate scientists, sea level rises between, you know, several inches and several feet over the course of the next several decades, I think the complexion of Capitol is going to change, and there'll be a lot of legal issues that arise in the context of that. And so I think that's really a long-term issue, but I think it's one that's going to be a continuing challenge. So I'm happy to answer any questions or respond to any comments.
Thank you for that brief and information-rich report. Are there any questions?
Brief comment, brief comment. Tony, I think you can take that last page and forward that to Tony Castro for the candidate debates for coming up 2018. Great starting point.
Any other questions?
I am going to have a problem going to sleep tonight.
Kristen, anything? This is a public item, anyone from the public like to speak? This has nothing to do with water, so be careful. No, I'm only kidding. You can talk about anything you want. Come on.
That's all right. I care about a lot of things. Becky Steinbrenner, thank you for that report. I am curious, does the City of Capitol have a building code and fire code citizen appeal board?
Not a citizens' appeal board, no.
Do you have a board like that, maybe not with the word citizen in it? Do you have a board, building code, fire code?
We have a process for appeal from Planning Commission in Arkansas. They appeal directly to the council, so you're looking at the board.
Okay, all right. I've just been doing a bit of research on that. There is a state law that requires such a board exist, and the state is quite clear in its description of qualifications for that board, and it involves a lot of people on the building trades, but also with good experience and knowledge of the fire code. So I just thought I'd take the opportunity to pose that question.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel, back to you. We're just receiving the report, so I don't think there's any action that needs to be taken.
Is there an action required?
It's just received a report, but Jacque has his finger up, which could lead to something.
Yeah, no, no, I received the report, totally prone. So I think this report is addressing something that I think is important in Capitol, and that's accountability of our public officials, including city council members, and so that's why it came up. So I greatly appreciate the city attorney telling, in essence, the public what he does, and also telling the city council what he does, and we do appreciate your work on a daily basis.
Thank you. We'll move on to the next item, which is second reading zoning code update, and Katie, our planner, is here to talk to us one more time about zoning.
And I have a lot of questions.
Great. Okay, so this evening may be our last meeting regarding the zoning code for a little while, but we're going through the adoption hearings. We've been through this process, it started out in 2014. Currently, after many, many meetings together with Planning Commission and City Council at our adoption hearings, and tonight will be the second reading of the zoning code and request for adoption. I'm just going to go over some of the highlights of what's accomplished within the new zoning code, and then following that, I'm happy to answer any questions. So really, in the new zoning code, one of the greatest benefits is we've made it user-friendly. There's new tables to make it really easy to read, new figures to explain concepts that were always difficult to explain, new design standards. Previously, we had the village design standards and the 41st Design Standards, now they're built right into the code with images. New, one thing that came out of the general plan was to protect neighborhoods. There's new standards throughout the code that when commercial backs up to residential, how new daylight plane standards. We've updated our ADU standards to comply with the state regulations. As you all know, we have a housing issue in this area, and I think the new code does a really good job of updating the ADU standards, making them easier and more attainable, and the lot size has been decreased to 4,000 square feet, so many more properties will qualify. Also, the affordable housing overlay, it used to have greater setback standards and a couple hurdles compared to, within the zoning code, and that's been updated as well to encourage affordable housing. Tailored parking standards, so the new code acknowledges that the village is very different from other sections of town, and there's new tailored parking standards that are representative of the two areas. Also, the new code has more green requirements, so bicycle regulations within multifamily properties and commercial development, also regulations for electronic vehicle recharging We've also added administrative review for small-scale projects, so members of the public can come in and they can get, I think we upped it to three food truck vendors per year, and, you know, just these smaller projects that typically would have to go through a process, it's much more easier to attain over the counter. Historic preservation, before there was a process that wasn't so clear in the code, now it's very clear, and it should help anyone who's looking at a historic property or improvements to a historic property know exactly what's expected and what the process is. There's, we've added incentives for public benefits, which is, it reflects the general plan update, and in specific locations, if a developer provides public benefits, then there are incentives included, and this is the area kind of along 41st Avenue where it could be applied in the new code. Also, we've addressed, we've got many multifamily homes that are within the single-family zoning district. We've made new guidance on what to do to improve those multifamily homes in order to remain before there was a sunset clause with a date tied to when they had to be removed. We've also protected retail vitality within the new code, so office space is no longer allowed on the first story within the regional commercial zone, so really keeping our retail alive and well. We've also updated the vacation rental overlay, creating a clear boundary, removing jig-jag lines along Capitol Avenue, and we've updated our zoning map. So that's just the high level, what has been achieved. With that, staff is recommending adoption of the ordinance to rescind and re, would you like me to read all of it? The staff recommendation, as in the staff report. So with that, I'm available for any questions.
Questions, Jacque?
I do not have any questions.
Okay, we'll move on to Ed.
Catch it before you change your mind.
No, I'm not kidding.
Other than showcase, this is more of a technical question, other than showcasing the fabulous work that's been done on the zoning code over the past two years, I'm just curious, because it was a second reading, why it wasn't on the consent calendar?
During the last meeting, we didn't really get to showcase all the achievements that both the Planning Commission and the City Council have worked very coordinated over the past two and a half, three years, so we really wanted to take a moment just to recognize that, go over the achievements before the final adoption.
I appreciate the showcasing, thank you.
Kristen, anything? I have nothing, but I want to open it up to the public. Seeing none? Jacque, you had a comment?
Yeah, in your staff report, you didn't augment what I think is important here. This is a result of a public process, and the general plan update, which many people participated in Capitol, and many of the concepts that came out of those meetings and the public input, the shirts, et cetera, are included. And I think, as you went over some of the points, I think all of us could recognize some of the things that we helped with and with your guidance, and some of the things I've gone back and looked at, and I said, where did you get that idea? You know, where did you guys come up with these ideas? And some of them, as far as I could tell, are some of the newest concepts that we could apply to good city planning, and I really appreciate that. And I also appreciate the fact that the department process is going to be streamlined. A lot of the things that took many, many hours because I had to go to city planning, you had to repair, prepare reports and stuff like that, you could do over the counter. I've reviewed that extensively, and I know I've gotten some pushback that we're taking authority away from city planning or from the city council, and I disagree. I think that one thing that Capitol offers to its community is fast turnaround for applications, and the situations that you've identified is over the counter. I totally agree with, so I really thank you for that.
I'd like to take this in three motions, please. The first being to adopt the addendum to the general plan update environmental impact report.
Just going to make a quick comment before we make the motion?
Oh, sure.
Ben, I was going to say goodbye to you and thank you for all the hard work you've done with this entire process, but I was informed you're not done, you're coming back for the coastal plan, so I'm going to hold my thank you, but I do want to acknowledge that you've been here for the whole process, and thank you.
That's right.
Mr. Mayor.
First motion should be to First motion should be to adopt the addendum to the general plan update environmental impact report.
So moved.
I would make that motion.
Oh, sorry, it's gone past you, you were doing something else. All in favor?
I was not.
That was Jacques in the first, Kristin in the second.
I got it.
Ed was talking. All in favor?
Aye.
The next motion, here's your chance, adopt an ordinance rescinding and re-adopting the zoning code of the Capitola Municipal Code, Chapter 17, rescinding the Capitola Village Design Guidelines and 41st Avenue Design Guidelines, moving floodplain, district, and green building regulations into the Title 15 Building and Construction, and adopting a new zoning map.
Okay, so moved.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And the last, adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to submit an amendment to the local coastal program to the California Coastal Commission for Certification?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All three unanimous? Did I miss anything?
No.
You did not miss anything, but we did have a second ulterior motive behind putting this item not on consent but on general business.
Oh, okay.
So before we adjourn for the evening, I just want to acknowledge planning staff, Katie and Rich, and Ben, who almost feels like staff now, for all the work they've done over the years on this enormous project. It's really appreciated, and as a token of our appreciation, we have a little present for Katie.
Yay.
Enough for it. We didn't get enough to share with everyone, but we did get cake for everyone, so that was the last ulterior motive was, we have a little zoning cake in the back of the room.
There's a zoning cake in the back?
For once we've adjourned.
And you have a zoning tie-on, you have a traffic tie-on.
I do, yes, I have one here.
Very good. Anything further? I hesitate to ask.
Nothing on my agenda.
Meeting adjourned.
Yay.
Let's have cake.
Okay.